Surprise for the Pledge of Allegiance. That Pledge of Allegiance.
The flag of the United States of America and to be called for justice stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice as our.
I'd like to welcome everyone to the last meeting of this 2023 to 2024 school year. Today is June 12th, 2024, and we're going to start with the Spotlight Employee. We didn't do any last month, and we've got quite a few people here.
Okay, so let me, I'm gonna go move to the front. So this is such a nice crowd for the end of the year. I'm sure you're all just excited for the full meeting. So last year, the school committee decided that they wanted to recognize employees, very generally speaking, just go above and beyond in our schools and make a difference in the lives of our students. And so we created this thing called the Spotlight Employer of the Month. And throughout the year, I think we've probably done it four times this year. We solicited nominations, and it's awesome. We actually get flooded with nominations, which is really a sign of, I think, the quality of our faculty and staff. And we could probably give 20 of these a month, but the school committee works behind the scenes and selects award winners. And tonight, I think we're doing four.
Six.
Five, six? Six? So without further ado, I'm gonna start with North Attleboro Middle School Civic's Teacher, Bob Collins. Do you want to come up? So I'm gonna read, so nominations can come from students, staff, parents, kind of come from all around. This one was actually submitted by a student. Is a student here, by any chance? So I'm gonna read the nomination. Mr. Collins exemplifies what it means to make a difference in the lives of our students and our learning community. An incredible civic teacher at NAMs, Mr. Collins has greatly impacted the lives of his students, colleagues, and the town. His hard work and dedication to excellence inspires both staff and students alike. Mr. Collins founded Team Green, a community service club where students collaborate to grow fresh produce that is donated to the local food pantry. The club is funded by the grant proposals written by its members. Team Green has been so successful that it inspired similar garden clubs at both Martin and the high school. Recently, Mr. Collins started a newspaper club where each issue, entirely written and edited by the students, highlights the academic, athletic, and musical achievements of the students. You'll even find a joke section to give you a chuckle and brighten your day. Mr. Collins exemplifies what it means to consistently go above and beyond to make a difference in the lives of our students and our learning community. I can't think of a more deserving teacher to honor as Spotlight Employer of the Month. Bob Collins. Congratulations.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, great job.
One more, hold on. Thank you.
Okay, next, we have from the North Attleboro Middle School, Special Ed Instructional Assistant, Anita DeSoto. This was submitted by a parent or guardian in the middle school, and she references the entire team. But Mrs. Megan Bowen, Miss Anita DeSoto, and Mr. Thomas Calabresi make an amazing team of educators. They work well together and truly care about all of their students. I cannot ask for better people to work with my daughter over the last three years. My daughter is nonverbal. This makes it very difficult to leave her in someone else's care, knowing that she cannot verbally tell me how she is being treated. My nervousness faded away when I saw her smile and get happy to see Miss Anita at school drop off in the mornings. It quickly became clear that Miss Anita cares for and treats my daughter as if she were her own child. When my daughter has behaviors at school, which sometimes leaves Miss Anita with bruises, Miss Anita always treats her with compassion and understanding. She never holds these behaviors against her and continues on as if nothing ever happened. Miss Anita has also made herself available after school, allowing my daughter to participate in activities that without an adult will be difficult for her. She was her one, one-to-one, one-to-one aide for unified basketball, going to every practice and game so my daughter could be part of the team. She has offered to go to the eighth grade dance so my daughter can attend and take part in typical eighth grade activities. It takes a special person to work with neurodiverse students and truly take the time to understand them, their wants and needs, especially when they can't always communicate them. Miss Anita has truly gone above and beyond to make my daughter's middle school experience better than I could have ever imagined, and I'm confident she has done that for many other students as well. Congratulations. Incredible. Next, we have North Attleboro High School, our Transitions Coordinator, Kevin Harker. Kevin. Kevin Harker is a power of example. As an instructional assistant, oh, this was submitted by a staff member at the, at the high school. As an instructional assistant, I move around and see different classes. I see Kevin encouraging special education students at the high school to make good choices about their future. He actively seeks to help high school students in the 12-plus group get employed, which requires teaching skills they need to be independent. He finds job opportunities and organize, excuse me, and organizes college visits for special education students to succeed in advocating for themselves. Kevin works tirelessly, seeks and gets grants and scholarships to help the special education student in the 12-plus group. He has brought in over $100,000 for the high school special education programs. He greets kids by name, gives them high fives, and encourages, encourages them to behave in a way that will help them to get and keep a job. This is significant because according to the Bureau of Labor Statistics, in 2023, the unemployment rate for people with a disability was 7.2%, about twice that of those with no disability. Kevin teaches the students how an employer would react to their behavior through workplace training that he organizes. He is tireless, teaching special education students how to make it in the real world. He is completely dedicated to helping students. Kevin checks in with teachers, students, and staff, coordinates events at job fairs and local college visits, and lectures by outside agencies, and is somehow almost always in a good mood. I think we can all attest to that, actually. He really loves his job, and the work he does to help the students in the special education department at the high school is exceptional. Congratulations, Kevin. Also from the high school, we have Special Educator, Peter Johnson. This was submitted by a parent or guardian at the high school. Mr. Johnson made a significant positive impact on my son's senior year of high school. My son did not have a high school experience as expected. There were many roadblocks to getting my son the help he needed to graduate with a class. Mr. Johnson went above and beyond with my son. Mr. Johnson inspired my son, and he felt he could trust him as a teacher. He took a genuine interest in getting to know my son for who he really is. He spoke hard truths to him, but in a way that encouraged him and lifted him up. My son often felt misunderstood in his school setting. Mr. Johnson always made a point in our meetings to point out his good qualities and achievements before going into his areas that needed improvement. My son could relate to him. As Mr. Johnson would often say, "I understand where you're coming from. I appreciate who you are." He worked with my son to keep him organized and current with schoolwork. Mr. Johnson is a gem and a gift to the high school. Congratulations. Okay, and our next recipient from North Attleboro Middle School, Civic's Teacher, Matt LaCass. Matt is just a guy who racks up awards. He's like a... So these are brief but powerful, very simply. This is submitted by a parent and guardian. I believe that Mr. LaCass deserves this award. He goes above and beyond to help his students, always available to guide them, look out and look out for them. He is a kind teacher who inspires kids to do great things in life. That's one. Another one. Matt LaCass is finishing his 24th year at North Attleboro Middle School. He's a dedicated educator and puts students first in everything he does. He makes his civic lessons engaging and challenging. He has created a classroom environment where students feel safe and take academic risks. His students leave his class with the resources and knowledge to be a positive contributor to our society. Matt LaCass. Congratulations. Oh, yeah, the, for the award winners, the write-ups that I just read, there's a copy of those behind your certificate. So you have that. Okay, and our last recipient tonight, from the Roosevelt Avenue School, Special Educator, Joanne McGrath. Big fan club, Joanne. So we have two very lengthy and awesome nominations. So the first... Oh, I think these are two. Well, either way, it's, yeah, submitted by both a staff member and a parent and guardian. Okay? Okay, so here we go. Joanne McGrath has worked for the North Attleboro Public Schools for 30-plus years. She's a role model for all of us with her outstanding work ethic, knowledge of special education and the laws, expertise on phonics in the Wilson program, wonderful sense of humor, and sense of community. Joanne has taught countless students how to read in a role as a special education teacher. Joanne has worked and advocated for students with social and emotional challenges and set them up for success. Joanne has been my mentor this year as a new teacher in the North Attleboro Public Schools. She has helped me navigate the curriculum, Aspen, which is our student information system, the special education process, policies and procedures, and establish a positive rapport with the students, staff, and faculty. Joanne has the amazing ability to listen and hear her students, staff, and colleagues. As her mentee, I am grateful for her listening ear, even on nights and weekends after a long day of work and taking care of her family. Joanne has an amazing amount of patience. I am thankful for all of the patience she has shown me as I continue to grow and develop as a teacher. Joanne truly cares about her students and will go above and beyond to make sure that they feel included and cared for. Joanne brings out the best in her students and shows them that hard work and perseverance pays off. As Joanne retires this year, I would like to recognize Joanne as the NAPS Employer of the Month for all of her hard work and dedication to the North Attleboro Public Schools, and thank her for her many years of commitment. Thank you, Joanne. That's one. Here's the next one. For nearly a quarter century... So what's the true number? That's what I want to know.
It's 27.
27, okay, close enough. Mrs. McGrath has helped support so many students in the North Attleboro School District. Not only is she caring and knowledgeable, but according to my son, she's funny, too, always putting him at ease by allowing him to be a silly self and cracking jokes with him every time he sees her. She's an incredible educator who literally changes the lives of the students she's helped. We met Mrs. McGrath at Roosevelt during COVID, when my son needed reading support to help manage his dyslexia. During this time, he wasn't even close to reading at grade level, but Mrs. McGrath jumped right in to support his needs during his third grade year, and he made incredible progress in reading. As his fourth grade year approached, we were delighted to hear she was going to become the fourth grade co-taught teacher. In over the next 180 days, we continued to see him grow and improve in his reading skills. During his fifth grade year, he continued to see Mrs. McGrath for Wilson reading support, and each month, we continued to see progress. At the start of the year, he really wasn't interested at all in reading at home, but today, he's reading the Harry Potter series, a huge jump in his attitude towards reading. No doubt, Mrs. McGrath had a hand in that. As we're reaching the end of his time in elementary school and looking ahead to middle school, it's clear Mrs. McGrath has set him up for success, and I cannot thank her enough for all the time she has spent with him over these last few years. I asked my son to describe what he'll miss the most about Mrs. McGrath, and he said, "I've learned a lot from her, but I'll miss her funny jokes the most." Thank you, Mrs. McGrath. We will miss you. Happy retirement. Everybody, thank you so much for coming, and this is like the best, best part of our year, so thank you for joining.
Don't want to stick around?
Guess not. Be really nice.
I love doing spotlights. I think it's like one of the best things that we do, and that was just a really great way to end the school year. We're gonna move on to the presentations, though, with our student reps.
We have some, who's gonna introduce our new reps? You gonna introduce yourselves?
We can do it at the end. Okay, good evening, everyone. Happy Under School Year. Firstly, congrats to all the amazing educators. So we've had a packed past week at the high school. Last week, Friday, was graduation, so we got to see all of our amazing senior 2024 graduates. We also had Senior Week the following, the week before that. There was a senior cruise, college dress-up day, graduation rehearsals, and anything but a backpack day, which was very fun to see for everyone.
So in May, May 23rd, we hosted Special Olympics, which was a really awesome event. A lot of the high schoolers got to participate, whether they were a partner or they like helped out with events. It was just very well organized, and it was a great day. And then the next day, we had junior-senior prom, which was awesome, too, and it was just really fun. I think that got everyone excited for like the end of the school year.
And tomorrow's the last day for finals, so everyone's excited for that. So we want to say congratulations to Bhavishnu Mudh for being the sophomore high school representative on the school committee, and the freshman high school representative, Sabrina Juliana.
Welcome to both of you.
And we also want to say thank you to Megan Lee for your amazing work on the school committee. We're so excited to see all the amazing things you're gonna do in the future, and we just want to say thank you for your role on the school committee and in our school community as a whole.
Congratulations.
Just a quick follow-up. Can I just, on that point, I just want to let everybody know, Tasha, I think you were there, Keith, too, but we recognized Megan at the Senior Awards Night last week for her incredible role and her student advocacy and as a member of this committee. So Megan, you're, you're amazing, and you have a bright future ahead.
Thank you.
I know Maddie's not here. I just wanted to acknowledge she's heading to UMass Lowell to study nursing. And then Megan, if you want to tell us what you're doing next year.
Yeah, I'm studying at St. Anson College in the fall. I'll be studying politics and public policy, and then, yeah, we'll see where I go from there.
Thank you, thank you for coming tonight. Thank you, and welcome. So we'll move on to Meg Kamiri.
Hi, two quick updates just for Student Services. This is Circuit Breaker time. Circuit Breaker, as you know, is a really important reimbursement mechanism for the high cost of special education services primarily our out-of-district students. This year, the foundation is a little over 51,000, so essentially, any student that is over that cost, we claim usually right before July 1st, and we start getting their quarterly payments the following year. And I provided for you the past three sort of school years' worth of reimbursements. Secondly, you've heard me talk about it, extended school year. We are really well positioned. We're kind of excited. We're finally heading into a summer with healthy staffing levels, really consistent professionals that are familiar with our students. We'll have our orientation for staff next year. We've been doing that for the past couple of years as an opportunity to review things like de-escalation, go over individual behavior support plans, allow staff time to sort of prepare learning environments before students start. So we operate in four of the buildings. Thanks to Ernie, we're ready to go with over a little over 200 students that will be attending our five-week session for extended school year services per their IEPs. Lastly, the IEP Improvement Project, we presented Ms. Toomey and myself at all of the elementary faculty meetings, along with Gil, who gave a little financial schools update regarding the new IEP. Again, main objective, just making sure that North Attleboro staff are prepared for what will be a big change across the Commonwealth in regards to IEP documentation. So those are my quick updates. Additionally, we did just want to, on Michelle, John, and ours behalf, provide you sort of a visual reminder or roadmap of where we're going in terms of really our bullying prevention and intervention plan. So you've heard that topic come out, and Michelle and John will jump in at any point. The law is over 10 years old, and so in North Attleboro, we know that we've got to sift through our efforts and what's in place in terms of our bullying prevention and intervention plan. And these sort of markers or these lenses at which we are looking at it, that planning is underway. And so you'll see a roadmap of what we hope to accomplish over the summer with our administrative team in terms of really diving back into any of the legal changes. It had, the law had been amended at one point, and so making sure we are up to date and aligned with our policy, which we know MASCE has been helping with. How does that impact our policies and practices in terms of how we handle things from a discipline perspective? If you keep going above the visual, what does it look like in terms of curriculums we've purchased and how those are in place for prevention purposes or intervention? What does our partnership look like with parents and guardians? So you've heard John talked about the desire to do some really focused parent groups the upcoming school year, so we're gonna talk about planning for that. Community resources, how do we partner with law enforcement, other agencies to really support and keep our schools safe and really better mitigate bullying that might occur? Special education, so in the law, there is specific talk regarding how bullying is handled for students identified who are special education since they have increased vulnerability. And so what are we doing in terms of ensuring that, especially actually aligned with the new IEP? And then social-emotional learning. So all of those areas on the umbrella are the way in which sort of DESI looks at bullying intervention plan, and you see down below sort of just an overview of what we have sort of intended as our markers and things to accomplish this upcoming school year, so we really give a good overhaul. Michelle has been facilitating the SEL Committee. They've met twice with real intention of looking at what has been sort of an outdated North Attleboro bullying intervention plan. They solicited a lot of feedback and have already made edits to it, so I hope to sort of finish that up over the summer and be prepared to bring it for public consumption come the fall. Anything I missed in terms of sort of...
Yeah, just thank you to everyone that's been on that committee. We really wanted to have a good representation of teachers from all grade levels and all different areas of the school community, and we also had a school committee rep, Sarah Stone, joined us as well. So we really got some parent feedback, and the team went out and really thought about what are we actually doing and what can we do better as the basis for the new plan? And then we'll really dovetail that, like Meg said, with the regulations and some of the other work that we're going to do. And frankly, it's just gonna be a goal for next year. It's really important, and we want to have this be a focus area. We want our entire staff to understand their role in preventing bullying, and then also train our staff on how do we investigate it and identify it when it's happening and what actions do we take? So parents are gonna be our partners in this work. We're going to have some really great presentations next year that support the work of the family members and how they can be a part of it, and then internally do a lot of training and just develop our team. And separately, our SEL curriculum that we've brought in over the last year is poised to really bring student understanding of how, what their responsibility is and how they can be a good student and a good friend, and we can stop bullying before it happens to where we're at right now.
I would just add, like Michelle said, this is definitely a sneak preview. You'll see this on my superintendent's call in the, in the fall, because it's of critical importance. But even though we talk about bullying, we use the word a lot, probably because the law requires us to and the regulations require us to, but I'd also extend the umbrella to just in general, student behavior and student discipline. A lot of things that happen in schools aren't bullying, but it doesn't mean we can't do better, both in terms of the actual behavior, and that's sort of where the students and the parent partnership comes in, and then also our response, our response to those. The public has a tough time teasing out bullying versus other behavior. We do, we do, too. So I just want to say it's kind of a broad umbrella, but it is focused on bullying prevention because that's what the law requires, but we have a lot of work to do. But it's, it's gonna be good, I think. And I appreciate everything Megan, Michelle have done to get us to this point, and we're gonna tackle this thing.
Anyone have questions?
I got a question about Circuit Breaker. And it's basically, what is the laws around for reimbursement? I mean, what expenses can you look at? Because I mean, if you make a case for it, you know, your time could be actually viewed as directly proportionate to somebody's placement, you know? So I'm wondering how far you can push the line to go for this?
Yeah, it's directly related to the services provided to the student. So in an audit, you know, upon audit, it's, have to really look at every minute of special education services to that student. The past couple of years, we've also been able to claim transportation, so those are the two big factors that we're able to claim in terms of reimbursement. So it has to be part of direct students to the student.
So you can't...
I appreciate your thinking.
No, no, it's just, no.
But it could be, I did note it in here, we claim any of our out-of-district students that are over that threshold, which most are. You could also have an in-district student that costs you more than $51,000 because it is itemized. So there's a, you know, money associated with what speech services might cost, what visual, vision services might cost, what orientation and mobility might cost. So that's really our job to make sure we are getting back and claiming every penny that it cost us for our high-cost kids.
Yeah, always has a tax account, always push the line.
I have two quick questions. On the, the new IEP forms, I watched the CPAC presentation, which was helpful, but very interrupted, lots of questions, and it became kind of disjointed and difficult to follow. So I'm wondering if there are other resources that might be available that you could just send out en masse? If anyone's interested, they can click on link here, 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 and look at... Obviously, I can take the old form and the new form and see the difference, but for people to really conceptually understand how it functions differently?
We can. So right now, up on our Student Services website, I've had a link that just directly sends you to the Department of Education, where they have exemplars in terms of an elementary one and a high school one. We also have two links. So we did a local CPAC presentation that just went through page by page, and then we've also partnered with Easton and Norton, where Alan Loom... So he's, that must be the one you participated in, where he went through it page by page. But parents can anticipate, as this says, parents and guardians, information to continue to come out throughout the summer months in terms of, because it will be... in terms of, because it will be, when we presented to staff recently, we talked about, like, you're in a car, you're driving on, you know, you know where your, where the steering wheel is and the side of the road you've been used to, and your destination's been the same. And now we're putting the steering wheel on the other side of the road and asking you to drive now on the other, or excuse me, the other side of the car, other side of the road, but your destination's still the same. So it's going to, it will feel vastly different, and so it's our job to keep educating parents.
And I think it goes even a step further. It's like on 95 when they change the exit number, and you're like, my map says 12, that says 15, isn't that where I go? That's the problem that I'm hearing going forward. My second question is on the bullying prevention plan. John, you and I had talked about the form. Is the form, just the documentation and investigation pieces, that form being revamped before the fall?
Yeah, we're going to look at the forms. Yeah, yeah.
Before the fall?
Yeah. Yeah. And we're doing a lot of different things. We're looking at the forms, we're looking at rebuilding an actual page on the website. We're going to be doing a video. Just, we're just trying to distill it down to, you know, easy to digest information for people to, just, again, we're going to take this thing head on. So, yeah.
Great. Anyone else? Michelle?
Great. Thanks, everyone. I want to invite Principal Peter Haviland and Curriculum Instructional Leader Patty Bratberg up. We're going to present together the educational plan for the high school. So while they're getting seated, you have a full version of this in your backup. It is a long document with a lot of pieces in it. And you may wonder why we analyzed exactly how many fume hoods we need in the cafeteria, but it is in the plan. And the reason why it is so detailed is because the Massachusetts School Building Authority requires us to go through this process, look at where we currently are as a high school, and assess everything that we do from programming to schedules to the delivery of food through the building. Anything you can think of, safety, security, is all in here. And then you will be asked to vote on this tonight because it becomes part of our submission in this next phase. That is why it says Module Three, feasibility study. So tonight, we have the privilege of presenting the educational plan. It has been three months of incredibly exciting work with a team of people from the high school. And I want to start by saying, I think all of you in this room know this, but North Attleboro is a community that is filled with a great sense of pride in our town, and they really celebrate its tradition. And at the same time, we think in terms of how can we embrace the bright future ahead? And I feel like one of the great things this plan does is take our pride and tradition in North Attleboro, but looks ahead to the future. So as you read this plan, you're going to see where we are. But then some really incredible thought went into how can we make this something that can be a sense of pride for our community for the next 50 years? So the education plan represents everything that we value as a community. We created that vision for the new or renovated high school, really thinking towards the future with a lot of flexibility and a lot of ability to adapt to the needs of our students as we change and grow. To accomplish this goal, we've had a lot of help. Our entire curriculum instructional leadership team has been a part of it. They have been an incredible source of just knowledge about the school and understanding. So thank you publicly to every curriculum instructional leader. They have done incredible work. Thanks to Principal Haviland and both of our assistant principals, TJ Rizzo and Lisa Giuliano. Without them, we could not have made this happen. As they wrote this plan, and as we really talked about the vision for the future, we spent a lot of time surveying students, talking with teachers and staff members, listening to community feedback. As many of you know, we've held community forums. We've done what's called user group meetings with every separate department at the high school to understand how they currently use the building and what they need in the future. We've also had visioning workshops that have been a public group that includes students, teachers, retirees from the community, former teachers who are at the high school, leadership team members from the district, so that we could really get the perspectives of everyone in the community. And we're still listening. So as we continue to get feedback, we are going to be able to change the plan and adapt it even more as we hear more feedback from people. Tonight is the first introduction publicly in this setting. And all of that really helped us to develop the plan. And the last, I'm going to go to the next slide. Last piece that I'm going to do is just try to explain, you've seen this graphic so many times in district, this is the representation of our strategic plan. What we've really done is taking the concept of deeper learning and all of the things that we think about in terms of success for all students, enhancing deeper learning, effective financial operation, engaging with the partners, with the community, and taken all four pillars and really thought about how does that fit into our new North Attleboro High School. We've also thought about our core academic skills, and what are our transfer skills that we want every student to be able to know and be able to do when they leave North Attleboro, so they can be effective in whatever they do in the future. So this graphic really represents all of that work. The high school did an incredible job because we probably developed that deeper learning graphic. We used to call it the golden donut, the yellow graphic. We brought it over to a new, more modern version. But we kept a lot of those same pieces because we want to give the message that deeper learning isn't going away. It's at the core of everything we do. So the high school took this work and then really transferred it into a plan that represents what they're doing at the high school and developed a vision that really represents the future of the work that we want to do there. So I'm going to turn it over to Principal Haviland, so he can give you a little bit of background about how we got where we are today.
Thanks. So it, this work really started just after COVID. There was this sentiment that COVID was such an interruption, and we wanted to return to normal. And that was a natural, understandable response to COVID. But one summer, we had a leadership meeting, and we knew that you can't return to normal. There's no such thing. And we had to continue to grow. And so instead of just improving what we currently had, we use it as an opportunity to reimagine and rethink what teaching and learning and educational experience could feel like and be like for all students. And so we do very well by all of our students, but we always know we can do better. And so this plan started in the summer of '21. We talked, you know, asked questions about where are we going, what do we need to do, what can we provide more? And we talked about these words of making education more relevant, more authentic. And even the students that were here tonight, that's an example of authentic learning. They took the skill that they learned in school, and they applied it in this setting in a real, authentic, meaningful, real way. And we want more of that for more students. We, as Michelle said, we did include staff frequently and our students, and spent a lot of time in our PLC meetings after school with staff, polling teachers, asking opinions about what, what ways we can improve teaching and learning. And ultimately, in order to do anything, we had to create a new mission, a new mission statement, a new basis for the direction that we're going that's clear to all people and that we can constantly reference. Next slide, please. So in terms of, I won't read this whole slide to you, but this is a powerful quote that's representative of a lot of the students, and this student was able to articulate it in a very effective and compelling way. And we use this as an example of the kind of resolve that our student body has in terms of the learning that they want to understand more, how it's more relevant. I think it was said earlier, the best, the best question a student can ask a teacher is, well, why do I need to learn this? And at the same time, a best community, a best way a community, or a great question a community should ask a school is, why do our students need to learn this? And this quote, I think, spells it out very clearly and in a very powerful way. So we've used that as kind of one of our guiding sources of kind of fuel in this whole process. Next slide, please. And so this is our mission. You know, I guess gone are the days where you just sign up for courses and take the course for course sake, read a chapter, take a quiz, read two chapters, take a test, get a grade, and move on. And we have to move towards a place where we leverage content and value content in each course and class, but we do so for the purposes of establishing deeper levels of learning so that students are more appropriately prepared for life after high school. We want our kids to have choices. We want our kids to be able to tell stories when they compete for post-secondary learning opportunities, whether it's education, whether it's in jobs, or any kind of career, or, excuse me, community challenge that's on anyone's table. In order to do that, they need to have those skills, those transfer skills that are so critically important. The ability to learn knowledge is a skill in and of itself, and to be able to learn how to learn and then use that to perform. We want to be more explicit and intentional in that process for all students. So this is our, our mission statement, and this is going to be the foundational guide for every decision we make, every approach we take to teaching and learning going forward. Next slide, please. So to create more context, this is the vision of a rocketeer work that we did. And this is the idea that we would describe what life will be like during and after high school for students in terms of preparation and readiness. So if you look at the kind of semi-arc on the bottom there, each of those are, are there on behalf of grade levels. And so freshman year, when students come in, there's a lot of questions that they have. And we want to focus our work in classrooms, using content to help students demonstrate a deeper understanding, like, well, who am I? Like, who am I in this school? What am I capable of? And then as that starts to develop, we start to get into the who are we? And building a sense of connection to community, understanding who they are in relation to the school, understanding what they can do to help the school achieve its goals, and so that they can build their lives within the school and use that as a template for any experience that's similar thereafter, high school. And ultimately, during junior and senior year, we start thinking bigger and more broadly, like, you know, where am I going? What am I going to do with all this? I know who I am. I know I'm part of North Attleboro, but I'm not staying here. I'm going somewhere else. And where am I going? And then what ultimately can I do with what I have and what I know? And through that sequence, pursuing those transfer skills, a problem solver, collaborator, communicator, and lifelong learner, you can imagine a student at a table or at a desk competing for a place in a school or a job. And for them to be able to tell a powerful story about themselves that is far and away better than being able to just to say, I'm a B-plus student and I got excellent SATs. We have to put kids in position so they're so much better at sharing who they are and how they can help and contribute to wherever they're going and wherever they're asking for entrance, admission, or a job. And so that is another powerful piece, and that's also the guide. So every classroom, you know, the ideal vision is that every classroom, every content area is going to incorporate these into their practices. And every student is going to have this as an explicit and implicit and intentional part of their learning experience. So we're excited about that piece as well. And when we talked about authentic learning earlier, you know, given the example of the students here, we want to be able to have early and frequent connections that students can make between what they're learning content-wise and what it allows them to do in terms of, you know, even things like North serves, that's a vehicle towards application of learning. That, you know, going back in terms of when we started, that 14, 15-year-old freshman can't venture out too far in the community. And so things like Keith, North Attleboro Beautiful is a great community service opportunity. But as students start to participate in things like environmental science, and they develop passions for certain content areas and its application, they can go to Boston Harbor. They can go down to, you know, somewhere on the coast of Rhode Island and participate in events that help them understand, like marine biology. And that's the purpose and the ethos of North serves in the terms of it being authentic. And so I think that's the last slide. And turn it back over to Michelle for the education plan.
Thanks, Pete. That foundation was so important for everyone to hear because some of you may have been at the school committee meeting last year where the CILs came and presented that vision, Portrait of a Rocketeer, vision for the future. But without that knowledge, I think the rest of the plan doesn't make sense. We wanted to back up and just make sure you had that piece before we talked about the actual plan. Can go to the next slide. So the concept is this, authentic learning is at the base of everything we want for our students. We want them to understand how education is connected. We want them to see how their courses connect to the real world. We want them to have experiences that are really hands-on and engaging and related to the things that they care the most about or the things that they envision for their future. So like Pete talked about, we answer those first two questions, who am I and who are we, in grades nine and 10. That's considered the foundation of instruction. Our goal is to keep our program of studies in terms of those courses that people love and are so successful at helping our students attain excellence in education. That piece stays. All of our core academic offerings will stay. Of course, they're going to evolve over time, but we want to be sure that every student has that firm foundation as the basis of their high school experience. Grades 11 and 12 start to develop into more personalized exploration. So if a student has a passion in videography, they may take our video courses or other courses related to communication. If they have an eye towards business, there are specific business courses that they can choose to take, starts to create a pathway towards what they might do when they graduate from high school. So we've broken it up into the bottom as foundational instruction and the top two grades of high school as the personalized piece through our still elective courses that are in the program of studies. But we're really listening to students and adding things that they have an interest in and that are really supporting the work that they want to do as students. That work has been the foundation of imagining a high school where every student has an authentic learning experience, imagining a place, and we've talked about our own kids walking in the doors of a high school, where these fabrication hubs, communication hubs, environmental hubs are at the center of our school. And we can jump to the next slide. We wrote a plan that talks about, we wrote a plan that really focuses on the concept of hubs. Hubs are both a concept and a location in the school. We're going to create this incredible center to the school where there are classroom environments that have hands-on opportunities. Perfect example of this is, right now, we have an incredible TV studio, but it's tucked in the back corner of the school, and it's very small and limited to what we can do in that space. By bringing that out to the front of the school and promoting that all teachers can use that space, we're going to be able to allow students to communicate in different ways, create videos, create podcasts, think about communication in terms of how can that serve them in the future. So the hub concept focused around three big hubs, but then wrote about a lot of smaller spaces within those hubs that are classes and locations within our school. But we want to bring them to the front of the school and put them on display. We want every student to have the opportunity to go to those spaces, whether it's for assessments, for building projects, for hands-on work, a space to present and collaborate and feel like it's part of their future work and develop their skills towards whatever they want to do when they leave high school. So a lot of these pieces just talk about how we took that tradition of our educational excellence, but we combined it with those skills for the future. We're reading constantly about what kids need to know and be able to do when they enter the workforce. And a lot of times, studying for a test isn't on that list of skills. So we're thinking in terms of how can we provide more opportunities for students to do those things that will really serve them well when they leave us. Authentic learning is at the heart of it. You're going to hear that word so much. We actually had a meeting with our leadership team today, and we were talking about how our goal is going to be deeper learning next year. And everything we talked about was how can we provide more authentic learning experiences for all students, pre-K up through high school. We're going to keep our core academics but add the hands-on piece that I just spoke about. And the idea that all of this is going to be at the center of the school allows us to put that, the projects and the learning and the work that students are doing on display to really develop that culture and the sense of pride for our school. So it becomes a showcase of student learning. Next one. Now I'm going to turn it over to Patty Bratberg, our CIL, to talk a little bit about what could happen in the hubs.
Thank you so much. So as we said previously, the hubs are a collection of classrooms and workspaces that are gathered on behalf of a common theme. So one hub is going to be the fabrication hub. And in this hub, students are going to design and construct on behalf of their learning. So an example of this, you may have engineering and sculpture as designated spaces within the hub. They have their home base there because they are always in the fabrication hub. But your geometry class might access the hub because they've been working on creating scale models. And so if they access the hub, they can then build their scale model. And perhaps the scale model is actually a model of a theatrical set, which we can then use the fabrication hub to build and have as the set for the fall play. And so the goal of creating that interdisciplinary connection, or the potential for that interdisciplinary connection exists within these hub spaces. Can we have the next hub, please? So our next hub is the communication hub. And we think about this as a place where students will create content. So we will have, the TV studio will be permanently housed in the communication hub. We'll have digital art labs and music labs and a recording suite. So a student may access this hub with their class if they want to create a podcast to demonstrate their learning. So something that people do in the real world to communicate with each other is create a podcast. Or maybe they create a segment for the morning show, which is put on every morning through our TV studio. Next slide. And then our final hub is the environmental hub. And this is one where we're trying to encourage students to synthesize their learning through how they interact with the natural world. So we can imagine you'll be seeing environmental science and arts... So we can imagine you'll be seeing environmental science and arts in this hub. And so students can go into the outside world and they can create art or use it to represent what their designs might be. And they also can go out in terms of environmental science and bring that learning inside. This hub, I think specifically speaks to a lot of students because we heard a lot of students in user groups saying how much they wanted outdoor learning to be possible. And so this hub opens that potential for all students.
So this is our last slide. And if you've read through any piece of the educational plan, we started by telling a story about the rich history of North Attleboro, the idea that it started probably in the 1800s in the Little Red Schoolhouse, where students of all grades went to a single schoolhouse, sat in rows, probably wrote multiplication tables with a little nub of chalk. And that was state-of-the-art education at the time. And we talked about our current reality in the high school and how when this high school was built, it was really set up to be successful, and it was such a sense of pride in our school community. And now we really can see that the vision for the future is going to take us to a whole new level where that hands-on learning, that authentic experiences for students is going to reach every student at our school. And that's our goal, that all students have the opportunity to have something at school that piques their interest, gets them excited, and develops their potential for whatever they do in the future. So we wrote this phrase of maintaining educational excellence with a commitment to open the doors of opportunity for all students because we feel like that's at the center of what this plan represents. There's a lot of specific details, especially page 13 about the environmental hub, communication hub, and fabrication hub. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have based on the plan. Anyone have questions?
I want to thank everyone for their participation. It was a massive document, a big committee, so that must have taken hours.
We totaled it, it was over 100 hours of time.
So thank you for that.
Thank you. Yes, thanks as a team.
What did you model the hubs approach on? Did you see another school that was doing that when you did your site visits? Is someone successful in that model already?
So a couple of different things. First of all, we did research, and it's related to project-based learning, but we were hesitant to call it project-based learning because sometimes people get this idea that all we're going to do is projects. And we want to preserve the right of keeping those core academic courses that we love. But then we heard about how people need to really have those hands-on experiences to be successful. So we went through probably three days of research where we looked at High Tech High out in California, which is kind of the far extreme. And then we looked at more traditional high schools and kind of everything in between. We have visited probably five other high schools in the area. Recently on Monday, went to visit Situate. Situate has an incredible model with a lot of hands-on learning. Almost every school is building, while they don't call it hubs, a central space for things like engineering, robotics, clustering art classes together, a theater suite with more than just an auditorium, but actual classes for drama and things like that. Really looked at how can we locate things in the school to give more opportunities for access for students.
So the traditional lecture-style classroom is still going to exist, but you are stepping away from it.
Exactly. So when you start to see concepts, which will come a few months from now, all of the concepts have about 40 traditional classrooms, and they're represented by blue squares on this big puzzle that we've spent a lot of time with. And there's still a traditional gymnasium, traditional auditorium. And what we're trying to do is really meld those two things together of, we know that our core instruction is important, and that's the base of everything else that we do. But for kids to be really engaged, we want those courses to offer assessments and opportunities that are hands-on.
And lastly, this approach is really going to narrow down your design type of high school. Is it not?
I think...
Does it have to be some, a little bit more openness to it, or?
They have told us that there's a lot of concepts, and a lot of the new schools use glass. And so there are these open learning areas. Classrooms are all still set up along the sides, but then there are these open areas, either in the center or kind of like, think about you're going up a staircase and the whole top is on display above, but there's still classroom spaces that you walk into. It won't be completely open. And then they'll be designated for things like, you know, a traditional class, like our electrical engineering class will be in the hub. But so we're utilizing every space for at least 85% or more of the day. We have to show that utilization rate, so it's part of the plan in terms of assigning classes to it, but then having other people have access to it.
I think generally speaking, when we start seeing design concepts, you'll see that all of our spaces will be flexible spaces.
Yep.
Like versus now, which is like, we are kind of what we are. Most of our spaces are what they are. I think when you hear the architects talk, they're talking about making sure that they're flexible and also that can be adapted as things change over the next decades.
Right. You're not confined.
Right.
Exactly.
And I'm sorry, just lastly, I already said lastly, so I guess that wasn't really lastly. Tell me about the phase that we're in once, if, and when we approve this. So what's the next, I mean, maybe you're going to get into that, John, but this is the big hurdle, obviously.
It is. So there is a forum next week and also a building committee meeting next week as well. There are other documents besides this that go into a massive submission to MSBA, and that completes one phase. And we'll get feedback on all of that, and then we'll enter the next phase. I don't know if you want to talk about it.
No, we also have Chris Kenny here. I should have introduced him earlier from Vertex, our owners' project manager. Yeah, so we have a big deadline coming up. The submission is something called the PDP. What's that?
Preliminary Design Proposal.
Yes.
So it's multiple options, and that gets submitted and evaluated. And the design team will continue over the summer, working with the users to refine. So you start with multiple options, refine what's called the preferred schematic report, which gets submitted in October as part of the process.
Yeah, just a quick extension of that sort of advertisement. So while we're talking about it, so we do have a public forum next Tuesday, June 18th. That message went out pretty broadly, hopefully throughout the community. We'll continue to advertise that over the next few days, recognizing that it's a kind of first week of summer, but it's really a critical time. That'll be the first time that the architects will introduce some design concepts. So it's getting real. It's getting real. And you'll see four design concepts. You'll see, a lack of a better term, like a base repair option, you know, getting the building up to code, basically. You'll see an addition renovation option. And then you'll see two new school options. And so this, again, our first introduction of these design concepts to the community. And then, as Chris said, they will continue to refine them. So it's over the summer and into the fall. Those design concepts, you know, this work that Michelle and her team did and Patty and all the CILs, this work really informed those designs. I mean, they've been working simultaneously, almost in parallel. And so it's really fascinating to see this work come to life. And you'll see it in the design concepts, how the hubs, you know, are integrated into the building. And, you know, I don't know, I can't, I won't do it justice before you see it, but it's really exciting work. So please come, if anybody's listening, please come next week, Tuesday, June 18th. There's a virtual option as well, and it's going to be exciting.
Anybody else?
As you guys know, I've been part of the process, so I don't have any questions. But I did want to just make a couple of reinforcing points because, like Gid said, the work that the team has done, and I know the CILs in particular have put in like, extreme amounts of work, and then of course with the leadership.
Ordinary work.
Pete and Michelle, you know, it's been, you know, just like following along. It's been a lot. But a couple of things that really resonate to me, and in my mind, it's almost like, forgive me for the term, because I'm not like trying to say where we are right now isn't, you know, isn't good, but it's like upgrading the whole experience. And it feels like much more of a second, like a tertiary educational approach. And a couple of things that are in there that I think are really important. One is the concept of learning how to learn. We've all been there. We've sat in classes, especially our generation and older, you sat in classes where, you know, you learned some theorem that everybody knows. Unless you're like 1 of 1%, you're never actually going to use that theorem again. But the point of it never was to know the theorem. It was to know how to take those types of abstract thoughts and extend them. And I think with the plan you've put together, that is more real and it's more deliberate than it would have been in the past. So I think that that is really, really important, and I'm glad that that showed up in there. The second thing is, we heard in previous community forums, they were in the visioning groups, this desire from the community for, I'm going to use the word vocation lightly, vocation preparation. We are not a vocational school, right? We're not. We're not a traditional vocational school. But that doesn't mean we can't be preparing kids for what comes next and for careers and, you know, all different things, military, college, et cetera. And I think this approach and the hub structure particularly actually makes that real. And so for those of, those people in the community that are really, really passionate about vocational education, to me, this is like vocation for the current ages. And I think that's, it's amazing that that's been built in so deliberately. The third thing I just wanted to mention is, you know, I hear from so many people in the community, like, whatever happened to core academics? Like, kids don't learn math anymore. They don't learn how to read anymore. Like, that's not the case, right? It's never been true. And it's not true with the plan that you've put together. But the way I look at it is, you've taken the concept of the core academics and you've just made them more tangible. So we're still learning them. We're still deliberately learning them. We're just taking them and setting them in a context that allows all students to access the content and truly learn. And then, like, in my mind, prepares them for the world context that's to come because, you know, the world is becoming more and more globally connected. And I think if we're not thinking that way, then we're not equipping kids for what's next. And then just a couple of last points. I don't think you've said it tonight, but you've said it before. The vision for a Rocketeer is very much anchored in creating future citizens of the world.
Exactly. Global citizens.
Global citizens. And I think that applies locally. You know, I'm always just, like I do, I read the newspaper, I listen to social media. And the level of negative discourse and uninformed perspectives, it's just, oh, like, I wish it didn't bother me, but it does, it bothers me to my core. And to think about kids growing up in a high school environment where they're actually understanding how to learn, synthesize all of the inputs that are coming in around them, and then form informed opinions that they can then take and champion in the community. Like, you know, unfortunately, you know, my son, my youngest, is a freshman, so they'll probably benefit from the educational plan, but they're certainly not going to benefit from any building improvements. But I'm excited about, so even though I know that, I'm so excited to think about the next generation of leaders that are going to be sitting around tables like this, making decisions for my grandchildren. So I just think that that is, that's amazing. And then the last point I'm going to make is, there's always this, and I think we're going to talk about this a little bit more on the agenda, but the link between extracurriculars and the core education, you know, philosophically, I think most of us in this room probably believe that those things are very, like, they're not two different things, right? They're part of that experience of growing leadership skills, connecting the arts to the humanities, to the sciences. And I think the approach that you've taken actually starts to make that, it makes it clear, especially in the arts, especially, like, you know, music, visual arts. I think about my own world. Like, I don't have staff meetings anymore. I record myself for 15 minutes and I push it out to my global team. Like, that's how I work. And that's the way the world is going. So teaching kids how to communicate in these new sort of tools, like, part of that is drama, right? Part of that is artistic, your ability to express yourself artistically. So I think, like, creating that, like, closed loop of what the full, I don't know, educational experience is, I think is super valuable. So again, those are the points I just want to highlight from your work that I internalized, but I think it's been amazing work. And I'm really excited for this next phase to see how that educational plan gets baked into a physical structure. It's going to be cool to see how that page gets turned and it gets incorporated.
I'm really excited. Thanks.
Want to echo a lot of that and the idea of how flexibility, adaptability, the ability to not only design something that is modern now, and I'm talking about the educational program within a modern space, but also a space that can continue to be modernized as we go. We've been stuck for a long time now with the current high school, both in physical ways and ways that curriculum can be adapted. And so I just think the more we talk about, as this high school issue continues to be out in the public, the more we can reinforce that this can be a living, breathing, growing, building, full of living, breathing, growing ideas, is really critical. And I was with a parent last night who's generally supportive of most of her school things, and she kind of said, I'm already sick of hearing about the high school.
Oh, no.
To which I said, I'm sorry, we're going to keep talking about it. But she said, I don't know why we need a new building. We have so many other problems, and we have so many other things in the high school that we could be working towards. And I, we talked through it, and the idea that we kind of came to was like, this isn't really about a building, with all due respect to our friend designing the building. But we are designing kind of the life of a North Attleboro student today, tomorrow. And we need a building that can work with it. But things like visibility are so critically important. We talk about meeting students where they are. We're going to be putting it on display for them and inviting them in. And we talk about inclusivity and often one way, but this is also a way to be inclusive of an educational experience. So I, it's, I know it's kind of, it sounds like a lot of brown-nosing here, but I am really impressed with what we put together. But I just want to continue to talk about this high school as a high, this new high school, as a new high school experience. So who are we? Where are we going? You know, what impact am I going to have? That's so critical to think about, not just the building, but what we can do with the building.
I think that's something we talked so much about and we really thought about. We need that space to do it. Right now, so many of the spaces are confined, and there's places in the building, like I mentioned, the TV studio, where it's tucked in the back corner, or our current fabrication lab is an old loading dock that we literally stripped down and put about six work benches in because that's what could fit in there. But there's going to be opportunities for so many more kids to access programs like that when we have the space that we can offer those things in greater amounts.
I think another important thing to consider is our essential questions. Who am I? Who are we? Where am I going? How will I impact the world? Those aren't just for kids. They're for us. We ask ourselves those questions constantly as we're thinking about this. We ask ourselves this of our educational plan, of our building, of our bigger community, because those questions guide us every step of the way. And if we can continue to answer them, the building we create, or to your point, the educational plan we create regardless of space, will continue to live and breathe forever so that when we're no longer at the table, someone else can carry it on because we're always answering those questions.
I like it because it reads to me like a very student-centered plan, but I really distill it to two topics, purpose and mattering. And so when I look at kids from two or even younger up until they're graduating from high school, they need a purpose. They need to know their purpose or have a way to figure out their purpose, and they need to know they matter. And if they have all of these opportunities, they'll either find their purpose or know their purpose, and they'll feel like they matter because there is some fluid feedback that they're getting from that building, which is really an indirect nurturing of their purpose and that they matter. And I like that because it has a social-emotional concept as well that they're going to... It's different than sitting in a classroom, being instructed at, to be able to function in your own environment in a fluid way. With all of these new educational opportunities is just, it's completely different than anything I've seen. And it's exciting.
It is exciting.
I think the one thing that's not really mentioned, but visiting the new schools, is that the community becomes part of the building too. Like, in our high school, our community really doesn't have a thing, and there's no safe way to bring the community and the things. But like, when we tour all these schools, they're like, oh, we open up this part of the school for like an art fair, and oh, we have community theaters come in and do this. And like, our educational plan can evolve into allow the community to be part of the school building as well. And I mean, right now, we're just segregated, so I'm excited to see the actual community be invited into the building often and feel part of it.
Anybody else?
I just have one question for Patty. Do you think that Peter should record himself for 15 minutes and cancel it all?
What do you say, though? Because it scared me to hear Keith say that that's the future or that's the present. But to Tasha's point, our students are already outpacing us because all of our student government candidates did just that. They recorded themselves and they ran for office via recording.
Note to all the principals.
Yeah.
A whole new world. Anybody else?
Thank you.
So we'll vote on that. We'll vote on that later.
I just said we should make a motion now since...
I just said we should make a motion now since.
All right, go for it.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the North Attleboro High School Education Program to be submitted to the MSBA.
Or the North Attleboro High School.
Oh, that's, for the North Attleboro High School Project. I was reading that.
Wait a second.
Second.
And I'll, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any needs or presentations? And it carries six zero.
Thank you. Thanks.
Do you want to come sit with me up there? Do you mind? See you guys.
Mary, do you have another? Do you have another copy of the?
Let's grab one of those mics. So thank you, um, um, you all, you all know my co-presenters here, but Dr. Nick Schlerf is our, um, well, end of his first year, but our athletic director, does a phenomenal job. And actually I should have mentioned earlier, but this is Gil LeFort's, um, first official meeting as our new Director of Finance for the North Attleboro Public Schools. So welcome Gil. So we, um, we are here tonight and I'm gonna do most of the talking, um, really just a few minutes, but we're here to, Ethan and I have been talking about the athletic department budget for, for a few years now. And tonight I want to do three things. Um, I want to spend a, a few moments on just talking about the athletic department budget. What does it cost to operate the athletic department? Um, I want to review how it's, how it's currently funded. Um, and then we have to sort of put out a question about sustainability. Um, cause the reason we're here tonight is that we've sort of hit this tipping point where the amount of available funding for our athletic program isn't adequate to, to sustain the program. And so that's kind of the big, the big picture of this, this conversation. So both, uh, Dr. Schlerf and Gil are both, uh, very organized and Nick's a very experienced athletic director. And he's spent, um, spent a lot of time this year, um, organizing and getting a handle on, um, on our budget. Now, he's also, I don't mean to speak for him, but he's a very experienced athletic director. And so this chart here lists out, um, what it costs us to operate the high school athletic department. Now, some of it's, uh, sort of fixed, if you will. So we have salaries for our coaches, athletic director and trainer. We have transportation and we have officials. Um, those types of things are known, known costs. Some of these items on the list, such as uniform replacement, are more of a, what you would normally have or what you would ideally have in an athletic department budget. I use that example because we don't currently have an, a budget for uniform replacement. Doesn't exist. Um, and the same goes for some other costs here. Things like essential equipment for our teams. We're talking, you know, balls. What else? I don't know. I can't even think out loud. Just.
Just basic equipment.
Basic equipment that we need. Bats, helmets, balls, nets, things like that. This is, uh, this is more of an ideal amount of what we in theory need to run, uh, you know, a robust athletic program. We don't quite have this ideal budget at this time. So, but I, I think it's an interesting thing. Cause I, I, we get asked a lot, like what, where does the money go? And this is where the money goes. It's, it's salaries, it's equipment, it's ice time for the hockey team, it's dues for the Hakamak League, it's, you know, um, supplies for our trainer, right? So we tried to, in one simple chart, to show you what it costs to operate the program. And when you look, and you kinda go to the bottom line here, we're projecting that a, a total cost of operations at about, I'm just kinda unwrong number, but, um, eight hundred and seven thousand dollars, um, to run the North Attleboro Athletic Department. So keep that number in mind. The question of how we fund it, I, I think, I hope this is pretty straightforward. We have three sources of funds. We have the operating budget. And in the operating budget, you see the top of the screen here. We have salaries for coaches, athletic director and trainer. And we have twenty-five thousand dollars in contracted services. This is a brand new, within a year, line item in our budget. And that's really for ice time. We had worked extensively, um, the last couple of years with the, uh, hockey boosters. We had put the burden entirely on the hockey boosters for many years to, to pay for ice time. And it's a core part of our, of our hockey program. So we've built in a pretty nominal amount in our operating budget the last two years. So our, our operating budget, that's it. We have four hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars in our operating budget. We then have user fees. And we currently charge one hundred and fifty dollars a sport with a six hundred dollar family cap. And then we have gate receipts. And that number fluctuates, right? Depending on the number of home games, depending on participation, weather, right? And so I call that, I lump that under outside revenue. So between user fees, this year we collected about a hundred and forty thousand dollars in user fees. And then we collected about forty-one thousand dollars in gate receipts for a total of one eighty-one. So when you add the operating budget and the outside revenue, that's what we have to fund our athletic department. And those two total roughly six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Which leaves us with a theoretical deficit of one hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars, right? Because it costs us eight hundred and seven thousand dollars to run the program. Costs us eight oh seven. We have six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to fund it. Leaves us with a deficit. Now, two things about that. First is that, uh, it's a somewhat hypothetical deficit, only because I gave you an example of, um, the, uh, u- uniform budget. We don't have a uniform budget, right? So it's a little, um, this, this eight oh seven is, um, a little higher than what we're currently spending today, right? Cause we don't have the money. But our actual deficit this year, and Gil, correct me if I'm wrong on this, we're gonna end fiscal year twenty-four with roughly a sixty-five to seventy-five thousand dollar deficit. And, and what that means is we need to find a way to pay for that. Now, we have a plan for that. Really, it's, all it means is that we, we have to tap into our operating budget to, to pay the bills. But the reason we're here tonight, and I had, I, by the way, I had, I had projected this, if you remember in my initial budget presentation in December, I had a slide that said future, future budget conversation, you know, athletic department budget and, and user fees. But we've hit this tipping point. And we've hit it, I think, for two reasons. One is that we haven't touched our user fee since it was implemented, I don't believe. And since then, the cost of doing business has, has just increased exponentially. The cost of transportation in particular, um, has risen. We have transportation contract and that continues, that continues to rise every year. It certainly has risen over the last ten or fifteen years since we originally put a user fee in. And just the cost of goods and services. Um, we have one, we have one, um, one of these, uh, line items this year, I forget which one, um, Gil, that went up twenty percent in the last year, one of our contracts. So all of a sudden, at the end of fiscal year twenty-four, we realize that our cost of doing business and our, uh, available funds to fund the program were, were imbalanced. So we're out of alignment. So it leaves us with this question, well, a couple of things to consider. One is that our current budget is, is not allowing for basic programmatic needs. I, I mentioned uniforms, but it's also equipment and just in general, the ability to, to adequately fund our program. We relied heavily in some of you are parents, uh, in, in athletic programs, we've relied heavily on outside booster groups and outside fundraising to supplement what we, what we don't have. And that's, that's, that's never gonna go away. But at some point, the burden is really shifted, really shifted to the parents. So we have three options. Again, we have a operating deficit this year. Um, we can maintain the status quo. And that, again, we've hit the tipping point though. So that means that next year, at this time, we're gonna have to find a, a pool of money to, to pay for it. What that meant for us this year, and this is not an uncommon thing in schools, but um, we had to put a budget freeze on, I think in April.
We talked about in April, we officially did on May twenty-fourth.
May twenty-fourth. So we, you know, we knew that we had some end of year challenges. We always do. This was one of them. So just as an example, you know, so we're sort of cannibalizing the operating budget to, to, to pay for, in this case athletics. Short and long term, I think we do need to look seriously at just adding more funds to the operating budget. It is atypical for a school district not to have a budget for things like, uh, equipment and transportation, kind of the basic, the basic cost of running athletic program. So we could look towards that. That's more of a short slash long-term thing. Um, and then the, really the only other place to look is increasing user fees. So we, we clearly don't have enough outside revenue to support the program right now. So I am very sensitive about user fees. Um, but, uh, at some point, we have a challenge on our hands about, you know, can we, can we adequately operate our athletic program? And so that's why we're having the conversation tonight. Did I miss anything, Nick or Gil?
No, I mean, that's, that's right on.
Yeah.
We have three questions. The first one, do you have comps on user fees?
I do. I do. We're, 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 we're low. Um, you know, so if you look at the Hakamak League, they, they range anywhere from uh, the low end, one fifty, um, all the way up to, uh, King Philip has a tiered, for example, a tiered, uh, fee structure, as low as two hundred, up to five hundred, depending on the sport. So we're low. What we don't have easy access to, um, is what they have in their operating budget. So, but I, I do have one example for you. So Attleboro has a two hundred dollar user fee. But we also know that they have, I think, one hundred and thirty-five? They have, they have one hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars in their operating budget for transportation and equipment, right? So it, when you look at comps, it's not just about the comp. It's really the combination of these, these three things I mentioned, right? User fee, outside revenue, um, y- right, user fees, gate receipts, operating budget, right? So we're low.
Second question was the uniform replacement. Is that an ongoing expense of thirty thousand a year? Or is that like a one-time bump because we're so far behind?
Yeah, no, for the, for the way that I, I have done it in the past is a, a rotating uniform scheme. So it's thirty thousand dollars a year that will go into four or five different programs over the course of four or five years till they get new uniforms again. Cause we have twenty-seven programs. So that's how it gets rotated around.
And then my last was what is this family member sports registration database? Just curious.
That's our, our registration information that we take from parents and medical histories and things like that to be able to manage each player in our system.
I'm not in favor of increasing user fees, given the, um, fiscal environment right now. I think that would be asking a lot of, of folks. There is something, and I'm not saying it's on, on your end, there is something hypocritical about seeing and listening to the vision of a new high school and the student experience and saying, we're gonna give you this brand new high school. We're gonna give you all these cool courses. We're gonna, you know, et cetera, et cetera. But we're gonna whack you for five hundred bucks to play sports. That should be encompassed as the full educational experience or, or drama, or whatever it is that you, that you participate in. Um, it, so, uh, from my personal standpoint, I, I'm in favor of this, I think this superintendent is in agreement with this. I think he just said this, of putting this into the operating budget. I think that that should be, you should be paying for that as much as you're paying for a pencil or a marker or a textbook or, um, a Chromebook or whatever. Um, this is, this is huge for kids to participate in after-school activities. Um, so it should be part of their overall experience. And I think that we should, I think we should fund it.
Can I ask what sort of projections we've made in terms of like, what does a user fee look like? A proposed user fee that would make us whole?
You know, r- r- roughly a hundred dollar increase would make us whole for now, right? Is it?
Yeah.
Sport? And does that touch the family cap or?
We'd have to adjust the family cap too.
Proportionally.
Yeah. It's a little tricky to answer that, cause it's, um, it's not a very precise, it's hard, it's hard to forecast because it's dependent on participation and also the impact of a family cap and the impact of how many people, um, we provide financial assistance to, which is a significant number. So it's not a, a pure answer, but roughly a hundred dollars, I think, would, would sustain us in the short term.
You mentioned some other, uh, schools might have a system based on sport. Cause as we all know, different sports cost different things. It's kind of hard to square the idea of a, uh, someone doing cross-country with someone doing hockey and being, paying the same amount. I say this as a former high school athlete who played an expensive sport, but I also understand that, you know, we have to be kind of realistic about cost.
And ice hockey is the one place where we do have a different fee.
I should have mentioned that.
We charge six fifty for a varsity ice hockey player, four hundred for a JV ice hockey player. So we do have that tier in, in our system currently.
We implemented that, uh, two years ago, I believe. Right? Uh, Pete, I think we met with that.
And if any, an adjustment was made, would you be considering adjusting the hockey one as well? Or maybe leaving that because it's been recently brought up with the cost of inflation?
I, I, I don't, I actually don't know. Um, I'd have to kind of give that more thought.
Besides ice hockey though, the general idea of a sports, what consideration or how might a tiered system help address some of this?
So it's, it's really a philosophical question, you know? And I, I don't.
Asking you.
Yeah, I don't. I, I, I don't support a tiered system, um, necessarily. I, I totally understand why. Just it's, it's very, it's very hard to, um, it's very hard to manage. Um, it's, it's hard to, in some ways, it's hard to justify. It's, I don't know. I mean, I just, I'd have to give you more coherence or with more thought, but I, I wouldn't necessarily, it's not something I, I would want to do. If we had to do it, we could certainly go back and do the analysis on that, you know? Nick, I don't, you've, you've worked in a system that had a tiered system. That had a tiered model.
Not necessarily. It's sharing, um, it was just, the first sport you played was three seventy-five, the second sport you played was three hundred.
Oh, I see. Okay.
And the third sport was two hundred.
Oh, I thought you had different sports. Yeah. Yeah.
So it was, it's just a matter of how, if you were a multi-sport player, you weren't penalized by having to pay three seventy-five times three.
There's just so many variables in, in, uh, running athletics department. And I use, I'll just use football as an example cause it always gets spotlighted as something that costs a lot, right? Well, it does, but we also draw, you know, two to three thousand people to a game on a Friday night for that activity. And that, that goes into the gate receipts, for example. Whereas, you know, cross-country, we're not, we're not charging. So there's all, I guess there's so many variables when you start going down that path of, um.
The gate receipts aren't proportional to.
No, I'm just, I'm saying, it's just.
Almost like an inverted argument.
Yeah. I mean, I, we would entertain any, anything that the committee wants to entertain, we would, we would, we would look into that.
And a new, new school committee member question here. So forgive it. But, uh, do we have to charge user fees for non-athletic events at the high school level?
So I was talking to someone about that today. So there, I, I don't know how many years ago this happened, but there was supposed to be an extracurricular fee and I think there technically is. I can tell you it's never been, it's never been implemented with any kind of fidelity. I, I wasn't here for the, that, but it's, I think at some point it was on the books, but I don't believe it's really ever been collected with any kind of fidelity. Pete, can you?
I would agree.
Is that correct?
Yeah, I would agree. And it's always been a question of, um, follow through on the expectation and then in doing that, we lose all kinds of participation. So it's never been a comfortable, um, task to, to manage because, um, we're thriving with students and their participation in non-athletic extracurriculars. All kinds of clubs, Flex Block has created a whole new culture, relationship between kids and teachers and activity. And, um, the day we start charging is the day we, uh, risk participation, which would undermine it. And so I don't know the answer on it, but I think we've been talking about it at last three years. It's just been this kind of elephant in the room that we live in order because kids are thriving in, in the system we have now.
And I'm not suggesting that we start. I was more curious about the existence of what it is because I agree with you. The minute you start charging, the minute you start limiting participation. I'm worried the same thing happens here though.
Well, that, that's, that is one of the risks. I was trying to get, and I had a conversation earlier about that very thing, you know? Um, we, we, it's like the unknown, right? You don't know if a student who may want to come out to run track and field doesn't come out because of, because of the user fee, right? Some, some people are gonna play no matter what, right? They've grown up playing hockey. They've grown up playing baseball, football, whatever it may be, but it's the unknown. So that's always the risk.
And, uh, sorry, I don't want, feel free to interrupt me.
No, it's a great question.
Runaway train. I don't know where we're going, but I might be off track, but.
I just got one thing. I think it's worth noting that like youth sports cost more than two hundred and fifty. I mean, I think I paid three, two seventy-five for, for football. I think I pay over three hundred for lacrosse. Baseball was two twenty-five and I haven't, my kids haven't played in over five years. I'm sure that's over two fifty. I mean, so I mean, parents are used to it. I think one thing though, as a parent and as, you know, just an act, thing.
I mean, so I mean, parents are used to it. I think one thing, though, as a parent and as, you know, just an act, thing, I feel like not the athletic department, but I feel like the booster's in my pocket every single day of every, every sports year. And if we do increase the fee, I'd like to see more oversight on them. Like, I'd like to see, I don't have a problem with them fundraising. I have a problem when they fundraise blindly and, let's say, not transparently, and we'll say, well, we're raising for uniforms, transportation, coaching, basketball in the sun to come up tomorrow.
Yeah.
And I'm supposed to give money to that. And I have a problem with that, because, you know, it's our students going out there, asking for the money. I don't know if my, those students are actually benefiting from it. So I mean, if we were to do it, I'd like to see, you know, transparent fundraising. If su, our students are raising money, we should, the parents and everyone that's involved should be knowing where the money's going for. It doesn't have to be dime for dime, but, you know, like, we're fundraising to, you know, buy uniforms for all the kids, our warm-up things. That's great. I, here's the money. But if it's, we're paying money, so we, my best friend can help coach JV basketball with me. I have a huge problem with that. And, you know, I think it has to go along with, if we do increase the fees, that we do have better oversight on these fundraising activities.
What oversight do we have at this point?
Yeah, there are, you know, fairly independent five oh one C threes in, in most sport programs. So the, the Gridiron Football Club, the Ice Hockey Boosters, the Lacrosse Boosters, they're all independent nonprofit organizations, so to speak, that have to account for their money in, in some way, shape, or form, in order to carry that five oh one C three. But they're running their own fundraisers and so forth. And because I don't have a uniform budget, the lacrosse program raised money this past year and bought new uniforms for both the boys' and girls' program. Or the ice hockey boosters are out aggressively fundraising, because they have to pay a twenty-five thousand dollar bill to the New England Sports Village for ice time.
I'll give you an example, Tasha, for a modest ball, a modest budget. Generally speaking, most of these boosters are pretty responsible. I've been fortunate, the last two seasons, I've been the assistant coach down in Branston. And volleyball, boys volleyball, pretty straightforward. The budget is basically, we get from the athletic department, three new game balls every year, so that's like a hundred bucks, that's it. And the reason why they have the boosters is, is some, some logical stuff. Warm-ups. They don't pay, as you know, uniforms are just basically, that's it. That's all the, the school provides, and they have to return them at the end of the year. So obviously, they don't have the kids going in, they're civvies, to home and away games, it just doesn't look, you know? And this is probably true of all of the sports. That's what the boosters pay for, basically, the warm-ups, to make them look respectable. And they fundraise basically for any of your pizza party. There's really nothing, there's really nothing that's, that's a high-end. I'm talking for a modest program. Obviously, for a stronger booster program, they might feel that there's something that the school can't provide for certain types of equipment, specialized equipment that they might need to raise money for. But other than that, our boosters, boosters are basically just supplementing that, that particular aspect. And obviously, the other issue regarding the user fees, that, that's, that's a universal thing throughout the whole school. And that's what the athletic foundations are set up for, provide scholarship for people who can't afford it. I think in this particular situation, like you said, it's, when you're right on the lip, you, there's, there's there's moderation for risk from year to year. Let's say we raise, the example always just suggested, the athletic fee's a hundred dollars to bring us up to the bare minimum level of equipment. If there's a dramatic downturn in participation in particular sports, Doc's gonna know about that. He's gonna tell you, hey, look, because of what happened, this is what happened, you know? There was an eighty percent drop-off in participation in one of the, you know, major sports that was a, you know, that. You know, you, you do look for numbers there, because numbers are important. It's about participation and image, you know, that type of thing. So my thought process, just showing that even with a modest budget, I think, I think the, the raising of an athletic fee, a hundred dollars doesn't sound unreasonable, based on the current times we have. And if it turns out, we have to look, come back and look at it. If there's some downgrading in sports participation, then we'll look at it from the operating budget side and raise the operating budget.
Tasha, you talked about local fees. I just know, I'm a resident of Franklin, so our override yesterday in terms of increasing the overall budget, and I have a rising freshman who will be playing hockey, and I will be spending a thousand dollars as her user fee to participate in hockey, based on the field. One thousand dollars for her to play high school hockey. But again, the operating budget isn't sustaining. I don't know enough about what Franklin's athletic budget is, but I do know their user fees went up by way to sustain, so a thousand dollars for her to play high school hockey as a incoming freshman. Six hundred dollars to play volleyball, three hundred and fifty to play tennis. So we're gonna have to cut down our choices, since all three of my children play hockey. But I just wanted to share, that's Franklin just obviously experienced.
They lost a huge amount, yeah.
Yes, so athletic fees will be impacted.
But see, we shouldn't, and that's, that's the point, is that you shouldn't have to cut down. I mean, most high school athletes only play in high school. And when you take off that uniform that last time, senior, that's, that's it. So, you know, I, I say we, I would love to see it funded through the budget. To, to, to Ethan's point, I, I agree, it's a sports town, people are gonna pay. But when you're playing as a little leaguer or, or youth sports, you're not representing your school. You're, you're doing an activity. It's not a, it's not a curricular, it's not a co-curricular activity. So that's, that's kind of where I'm coming from.
Tasha, just a, a point of clarification that I think is really important, that is in the ether, cause like, I know the tone of how these conversations can go. This is a forward-looking conversation. There's no sports being cut. There's no, like, this isn't a crisis. There's money. You can figure out the budget, even if we did nothing. But you're looking ahead, and you're saying, hey, these things are escalating. We've pushed a lot on the booster clubs. Some of our teams look a little ragtag when they're out there. You know, the uniforms are starting to get, show their age. So I just want to clarify that. Like, this is a forward-looking conversation. There is no fire at the gate, right?
No, no, no fire. Smoldering, maybe, right? Cause I mean, this is, again, we fit this.
The real issue.
We fit the topic, but we, we have, we have a real deficit this year, that we, you know, we have a, a current plan to to, I mean, we have a current plan to fix it, right? But that's coming out of the operating budget.
Yeah. Something else will.
Something else, right. And so, and it's not a small amount. It's certainly not a crisis. No. But it is, transportation costs are gonna continue to rise. Hopefully, the cost of goods and services don't continue to rise. Hopefully, they, you know, maybe it was a period of deflation. We'll see. But we're, yeah, we're, we're at that point. The one good news is, and I, I should have clarified this, is the largest part of the budget, which is salaries, right? So coaches stipends, other salaries. Those do rise every year and have been rising with our operating budget, right? Cause they're, they're baked in. So that, in that, in that respect, we're good. But it's, it's all the other stuff, you know?
Good. I just, you know, you know how these things go, right?
Oh, yeah.
So there's gonna be some chatter tomorrow.
No.
That we're talking about, like, you know, cutting programs.
No, we are not. Thank you. No.
So that question answered, just a, a couple of things that I'm wrestling with in my head, and I, I agree with basically what everybody's saying, and I think this is a very complicated issue. In a perfect world, this is part of the educational experience. And fifty years ago, Go Big Red, this all would have been paid for. This all would have been part of the budget. And then every community has faced the same challenges over the last twenty-five years, right? And when they were looking for places to cut, this became one of those places. And it's easy to let uniforms go a single year, but then it's out of the budget, it's out of the baseline. And then you cut it a second year, a third year, and then the booster clubs start to fill in. So, so I agree with you totally, that this ultimately, in a perfect world, is part of the educational experience. And I do think, you know, we talked about this a couple of meetings ago, like, when we go into this next cycle, next year with, with the town council and the budget, like, we should just be talking about these and make sure the council knows that some of these things are being, are being covered by boosters and, and et cetera. Because I suspect that's like a positive conversation that we'll have about philosophically, what do we all think? And, and so, whatever that is, but we also know that there are trade-offs happening every day in this community. So if we add thirty thousand dollars or whatever next year to subsidize part of this with a plan to grow it thirty, 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 or whatever, to get us to a point where we really should be, we're trading things, right? There's, that's thirty thousand, that's not three seventy, that's nothing else. But I think that's a conversation that we, like, if, if this is important to us as a school system, we should be like putting that forward when we submit next year's budget. And I think that's the perfect time for it.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that. I just would say, our deficit's gonna continue to increase, and so it's urgent in a way, right? So if we have a seventy-five thousand dollar deficit this year.
Yeah.
I mean, next year, I would strongly recommend that we go in with an updated number for the operating budget. Like, I, cause otherwise, we know that we have a guaranteed deficit for the next.
Yeah, yeah.
Few years, you know? So like, I'm all for phasing, but I'm not when I, I don't want to get in this, this situation where we're cutting staff to, to pay for a bus. You know, I don't.
Well, you wouldn't. That's how we got here in the first place. They cut the bus.
Yes, yes.
Ten years ago, because nobody will make that choice.
Yeah.
So whatever the number is, my point is the same.
Yeah.
When we go into next budget cycle, and we're talking about our priorities, and we're looking at that list of fifteen things or whatever, this should be on there, and we should be really open about what we're not paying for as a community. So that, that, I think is just something we should keep in mind for that. As far as like the user fees go, after saying what I just said, like philosophically, I prefer not to see them at all. But they do exist, and they are part of the status quo. Every community has them to some degree. And really, as like a, a taxpayer, it is like a cost that is specific to certain people. So I think, you know, wearing a broader taxpayer's hat, like, it's not totally unreasonable for, you know, a little bit of, of, you know, I don't even want to use any of the words that are coming to my mind, but like some level. So I think user fees in general, like, I get them, I understand. And if we really haven't escalated them at all over, when were they implemented, Ethan? Were you even on, was that before you? So fifteen years ago or more?
Yeah.
Has it been the one fifty that whole time?
I believe, I believe so. I couldn't find any history on that.
It was the year that we did the, the bus fees and everything.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was, it was a mess.
Oh eight or something like that?
Yeah, it was right around the crash.
It was, yeah. It was around that time, Keith, yeah.
So, you know, a little, some level of escalation seems just totally reasonable. I do think that if we are gonna escalate it, we should look at the caps. Cause I do hear that, like, that's six hundred. Is that per season or for the year?
A year.
Per family, and that's a family.
For the family, for the year. So it's basically two students, three sports.
It's four, it's four fees. If, if they have a fifth sport or a sixth sport with two children, three children, it just depends how many siblings are.
Towards that too, though?
What's that?
The busing fee goes into that as well, right? The transportation fee does not. I thought it was a total, it was supposed to be a total.
No, no, no. It's a separate.
Supposed to be, when it was designed.
The other issue that we have, and Nick has probably uncovered this in his, in his first year, is that we don't even have equity amongst boosters. We have basketball players, and we don't have a booster still. So I think we're getting ready to formal one. But, you know, that puts the basketball program at a disadvantage. So, you know, you got one booster club who's fundraising for the, for the, for the sunrise. Is that what they were fundraising?
Shh, shh, shh.
Basically. And then we don't, we have another major sport, which is a sport that kids love, that we don't have a booster club at all. So, you know, that's, that's a, that's a big factor.
Yeah, I was gonna say to that point, kid, like, if we don't do this, and you just keep, like, the, the, if you don't get it into the operating budget eventually, the burden goes to the parents one way or the other. So they, they pay the fee, or they get hit up by their kid on the fundraiser. So either way, the parents are gonna, like, get it. And I would like the plan, at least with the, with the user fees, they're more planful. Like, when, when you're working with the booster clubs, you don't, you have no idea. You're, you're floating ideas to them. But I know from the Allman Association, Pete, right? Like, that's how it works. Like, you come to us with ideas. We're not exactly sure what we're raising. And we, you know, we fund what we can fund, and that's the same, same game you're playing in. And it, like, you can't forecast, you don't know. You know, like, are they gonna come up with new uniforms when they're like all yellow and ratty? Or is this the year that you've gotta, you know, go beg for ten grand to do it?
I just think extracurricular activities is such an important part of a student's experience. I really do, and I think it's just be funded. And I understand that as a taxpayer, you get hit somewhere, whether it's a user fee or a little bit raised in taxes, fund the budget. But, uh, seems a little cleaner.
Yeah, I'm concerned about when we bake it into operating budgets, and we've sat here in recent times and talked about how other schools, middle school theater, for instance, we don't have the money for that, but we're gonna go get more money for athletics. And in a town where athletics is very, very prominent, we can easily leave other things behind. And once again, saying that as a former high school and college athlete, but like, we can't just focus on athletics. And when we, there are trade-offs. So I'm concerned about the idea that it's permanently part of a larger budget.
Yeah, I, I would just push you to say, it is a core part of our educational program. It's educational athletics. And we're not paying, we don't have money to pay for the bus to transport kids. So I'm not, I, I want to make sure we don't cloud the conversation, because uniforms, swag, you know, warm-up suits, that's what the booster clubs are good for. The parents will never pick up the cost of a, 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 I mean, I should never say never, but that's where our, that's where our challenges are right now, and just kind of the core parts of our program.
Well, that's one of the problems we run into. Some programs say they're raising money for busing.
But they're, but they're not paying, they're not paying the bus. Yeah, they're not paying the bus.
But like, right now, before Nick came in, we had no idea where the money went. So somebody could legitimately say, we're paying for the bus, and I'd be like, doesn't sound right, but there's no athletic budget.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I'm just, yeah, again, long-term, and I know to Keith's point, it's not a crisis, it is, but we, it is a core part of our, of our program. Just like music, just like theater, just like art. And I get, user fees are part of, it's an unfortunate part of twenty, now twenty-first century education. I was, I'm old enough to, to remember when, when the wave happened and everybody had to implement them in the early two thousands. But, so I don't think they're going away anytime soon. But we do have to make sure they keep pace with, you know, we're talking fifteen years here of inflation and transportation increases. And so, I don't know, I'm, I'm a little worried about going into a year without any actual plan. Fully committed to baking into the operating budget, but is that a guarantee either? So.
Well, I was gonna follow up on something Charlie said, because he asked two questions, you answered one of them. And one of his questions was if this is, I'm paraphrasing, but basically, is this a long-term plan? Is this a stopgap measure? And so what you're saying is sort of like, you want to do this for now, then you'll bake it into the operating budget, see what happens. And I'm not promising rainbows and unicorns, but if we get what we need from the town, then maybe the user fees can be readjusted again. Or would you not want to do that because it's a stream of revenue?
Listen, I, I don't, philosophically, I'm opposed to user fees, right? So, yeah, I mean, to the extent that if, if we can, if this is the path we're trying to go down, is like, you know, if we, if we choose to raise them even nominally, we, we tackle that. If, if long-term, we end up with an operating budget that can fully sustain a program, let's move to, let's move to repeal that, right? I will say, though, I think we all said that
Don't ever go away.
Uh, twenty, twenty years ago, and they've, they've never, they've never, they've never gone away.
In terms of future revenue sources too, I'm just saying things I'm certain everyone's thought of, but I just want to say it out loud.
Yeah.
You know, as we think about new schools being built, and if, you know, there are opportunities maybe to, you know, combine, especially even new educational programs, you know, combined on fundraisers with a marketing team to, you know, maybe centralize fundraising efforts. Very anecdotally, and a long time ago, but we had a user fee of basically almost a thousand dollars to play baseball in Los Angeles, where I played. It was pretty high level, but it was a pretty ridiculous fee at the time. But it was basically, I sold Christmas trees through the school. And we raised the money every year, and I sold a lot of Christmas trees. But it was a great program, cause, and, you know, a lot of people need a Christmas tree.
Yeah, yeah.
It was something you can kind of get behind. I know we have fundraisers on individual sport level. You know, people are painting driveways, or they're selling wreaths, right? I'm wondering, just the thought process about maybe centralizing athletic fundraising, so that we can make it equitable across groups. Another thing is, you know, our brand-new scoreboard.
Yeah.
And those advertisements that might be able to be played for, you know?
I, I should have mentioned that, cause that, 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 we will, that's gonna yield advertising revenue. So we had talked about that.
Right.
Maybe that's our uniform, you know, maybe that's our uniform budget. That's still a little bit of a unknown number right now, but we fully expect to have revenue from there, yeah.
I say this aside from the conversation of user fees, but as things continue to escalate, because it probably will, you know, or we can keep just uncovering those opportunities that are specific to athletics, frankly, that are specific to facilities, that you can't, you might not be selling. Selling a business card ad, sized ad in the theater program is a lot different than selling a video ad at a full, a full house on a Friday night.
Do we have any projections on revenue from the scoreboard?
No, no, we, we don't. Only just anecdotally from other, other districts that have, that have gone out. But we, you know, we hope to, I don't even want to put a number out there, but it'll be hopefully tens of thousands of dollars a year. So, which is significant.
So like, what about the idea of, like, not getting crazy here, but just some level of inflation adjustment, like a reasonable inflation adjustment to again, I, I'm with everybody and, and the superintendent, I'm opposed to the concept of them. But if we have that sort of foundation, it doesn't seem crazy to think that some sort of inflation-based adjustment would be out of line.
It would have been nice to do this in pieces, probably, so that it can be, obviously, look more, so, you know, forty percent overnight looks, oh my gosh. But maybe it should have been. associate, you know, forty percent overnight looks, oh my gosh, but maybe it should have been done. It should have been.
Yeah, we didn't have the numbers. We've been asking for years to please provide us an athletic budget and this is Nick's first year, year to get his hand on it.
Yeah, it's not necessarily, Chris, it's more just the idea of like, I know, piece of it now.
Dying for this information. I mean, I, from my perspective, you know, I promised I wasn't gonna say it, but I will anyway. Like, when we didn't try to take the full chunk of this chapter seventy, then I can't go and say what should be in the operating budget because we didn't fight for it. So, it should come out of my pocket, you know? That's the kind of way I feel about it, you know? So, I don't think it's asking too much. Knowing that what I pay for other sports privately that aren't taxpayer, that, you know, a parent picks up the bill. I mean, it's, do I wanna pay the money? Absolutely not. And do I think it should be free? Yeah. But I, again, at the end of the day, it's gonna, it's coming out of my pocket one way or the other. It's coming out either in the form of a user fee, which I know where it's going now. I can look at this list and see where it's going. Or I get hit up by ten different fundraisers throughout the year that I'm gonna pay towards anyway. So, for me, it's cleaner to just give the school the money and I have less worry.
So what about that? Cause you just spurred a thought. We do have oral promise, which I know, I'm a lawyer. Oral doesn't necessarily mean everything, but if chapter seventy funds come in higher, which so far it looks like they are, we have guarantees from Mike Borg to pay for quote unquote projects, so that he doesn't have to revoke the budget. We could always utilize that and earmark it for particular items on this list that aren't being met. And I personally think, given that this is a sports town, that would be pretty palatable because it's not like it's going to some other school project that everybody's sick of hearing about all the roofs and playgrounds. And they're wonderful things, but everybody's like another one as opposed to this, which I think people would appreciate not having the cost go up.
Yeah, the, so the mechanics of that are important because we would need to confirm that that money can be used over multiple years, almost like a capital project, right? Cause like, I'm not, we don't wanna spend four hundred thousand dollars, three hundred in one, in one year necessarily. We have an operating, we have an operating budget.
And I don't, I don't mean to suggest we should use a hundred percent of it and I have no idea what that number even is, but we could use X number of dollars out of it to meet this deficit and the rest could still be subject to further discussion, but.
The, the challenge with that, Tasha, just from my point of view, is it's that old adage of using one-time money for ongoing costs and it like creates a trap for yourself basically, cause then your gap the next year is even more and you're trying to close it.
We're still gonna have a larger gap next year though, because our user fees this year aren't gonna meet whatever rising expenses we have next year. We still need to build it into the base budget. So, my thought is just to get us through a gap year and then build it into a base budget.
What I was thinking, I don't know if you're, if this is what you're saying, but maybe it is. There's sort of three levers to be pulled here based on that third lever that you just added to this. You could adjust user fees. And maybe it's not the four hundred dollars.
Right, right.
It's some amount that's not the four hundred dollars, but it accommodates for some of the inflation. We, we go into our budget cycle knowing that we've got a prioritization discussion. Charlie heard you, like there are loads of pro, programs that we wanna support across town and, and where does this fit in the hierarchy? And then you've got a bridging mechanism, right? With potentially that, that chapter seventy money to help bridge us. So, like, if we pull all three levers, right? Maybe that solves this year, starts to chip away at the future problem and, you know, sort of minimizes the impact on all fronts. I don't know, just a thought.
Yeah, I think it's a good pulling from multiple buckets resolution where there's no one. I don't like, um, resolutions where there's an intense hit in one place and then something else just seems inconsequential in comparison to what the, the cost is. Um, so I think that could be kind of a moderate response. I like that idea.
I really don't like the idea of kids who are actors not paying a fee and the athletes are, because you're penalizing the athletes. That's not fair at all. Either way, it's an extracurricular activity. So that, that's, that's, you wanna talk about inequities, it's a complete inequity.
Yeah, I think you're right. Is there a way, Pete? Cause I hear what you're saying. Like, you guys have done such an amazing job of implementing like literally thousands of clubs and activities. Can there, can we like a major activity? Like, there's gotta be, I don't know, sports, the, the three major performances, right? There's, there's a handful of things that are major activities that, that we could sort of get at some of that parity piece.
So, yes, there's, there's athletics, which is a very familiar, uh, annual cost, you know, it works. And then there's the major clubs, which band, theater, all those different things. Band has uniforms needs. Um, those band uniforms haven't been, um, purchased or updated in a couple of decades. So there's incredible, um,
They've fundraised.
You know, expenses with these pieces as well. And then there's, there's kind of like a lower level, low tier, uh, once a week, ten clubs that are just high interest student, uh, things. And so there's a variety of ways to handle it. But it does go back to, and I, this conversation is so refreshing because it is very complex, but, um, you hear the number of people saying that they're philosophically opposed to user fees, um, to me is the basis for a long-term philosophy that we adopt. And I know, you know, fifty years ago, twenty years ago, it was what it was and it's irrevocably changed in a lot of ways. But the education vision that we just found out, it talks about lessons learned that are currently learned more clearly and explicitly on playing fields and on stages, uh, more than they are academically, that learning how to learn, learning how to be, learning how to work, learning how to be accountable, learning how to be part of something that's bigger than yourself individually. And the community values that and that's why we call ourselves a sports town. We're not like a sports town or a community town. We use sports to build communities. And so, like it comes down to a cost value standpoint, but, um, the refreshing part to me, long-term, is to think very clearly and care, clearly and carefully about what are we trying to accomplish with these extracurriculars? Cause I've always said the same thing in all school districts I've been in. Athletics pays the price, um, and the other groups, band and theater, um, they don't. They don't, um, draw from their parents. They get, uh, gates and they pay for their scripts, um, in that way. This community has funded music disproportionately, um, in the past few years, more than I've ever seen a community fund it, um, through the override and the benefits from that and a recent grant that Rep Scanlon got us last year.
That's paying off dividends though, Pete. If I saw a graduation.
Yeah.
Solid, solid.
They're all graduating though, so we gotta replace them now. Amazing, amazing.
So, yeah, there, there's always a way, right? And, uh, but we have to kind of calculate and anticipate what its, its, its impact is gonna be. You know, I always intend that our most marginalized kids are the ones that are most immediately excluded. And those are the ones, those are the kids that need those lessons, uh, the most. And so that's another hard thing. And so, we're talking about, in our, our vision, we're talking about students existing on behalf of themselves and their school and their community, um, and wearing with pride. You know, youth athletics is not necessarily educational, but it is raising kids. It's a community raising kids. So it's far different from a pay-to-play, private business organization. And so, there is a synergy between youth athletics and educational athletics, uh, which is a healthy, healthy part of this community. And I'm jealous now because, you know, Meg was talking about hockey at Franklin. In the last three days, I have twins who are gonna be playing sports at King Philip next year as freshmen. And I just put the bill, which basically caught the attention of the summer because we were doing the football. The football user fee, it was the, um, uh, gun camp that they have to go in the summer. And then it was the stayaway camp that the team goes to late in August. And so a three hundred dollar registration fee plus a hundred and fifty for, um, the gun camp, plus another hundred and fifty for kids with the stayaway camp. That's what it costs in June to play football in the fall at, uh, at King Philip High School. And then they're playing two more seasons after that. I don't know the answer. Um, I know the challenge and it's a great question, but I don't know exactly how to do it. But it comes down to a decision that the community wants to make about what it believes about the value of.
I've just been here for so long. I've always been under the impression, because we did set it up, that those fees were being charged. So I kind of feel somewhat lied to for, over all these years, that we've always been kind of told that we're proportionately charging everyone that's doing extracurricular besides like the mad, the sad and these other programs. But like for band, theater, we've always been under, at least I've been under the impression when I first got here, that we were charging for those and.
I mean, the family ID registration does say that there's a fee for instrumental music, seventy-five dollars, or theater, each of the three productions you're going to do.
Yeah, that's, I see that. I, I know that was going on, so.
The fees are there. They've been implemented, but they're not collected or followed up on. Because again, they're not coming to the table with a budget prices or whatnot. Again, my first year here and this is what I saw. We better be talking about it, so.
In sports, you can't take the field of the court unless you play, unless you play, so.
Yeah, they follow, like, they follow off.
Like you may make the game, but if they haven't paid, then you're not playing, so.
Even when you have paid, they get, they follow off sometimes.
Took your spot to the third time, then they let you go.
I checked my bank statement. I was like, I swear to God. Get their money.
With all this being said, I'd be in favor of two fifty for a year and to reexamine it come June next year, which I won't be here for. So that's an easy decision for me, but, you know, I would be in favor of going to two hundred and fifty.
We'll bring you back to count the votes.
I will be here if you need me.
Do we wanna just put a motion on it and then we can start discussing?
Sure.
Anybody wanna make a motion to, I don't even know what we're calling it?
But what, we'd have to put, just for, just for motion purposes, what would the family cap?
That, that's what, so right now it's, it's, it's four, um, times four. So if you, if you wanna make it a thousand or you wanna lower it, again, it's, that's why the projections aren't, you know, they're not gonna be exact because it, there's some variables in there, but in, in theory, if you set this, use the same model, it'd be a thousand.
You said another family cap, right?
Yeah, four sports.
Do other towns do a family cap?
Many, I think most, if not all. Yeah, it's pretty, pretty typical, yeah.
Does that, does a thousand line up with other towns that you talked earlier about individual?
Meg, what are you trying for a thousand cap?
I don't have the family cap in, I don't have the family cap in.
I mean, I know Sharon's family cap did the same thing with four.
Oh, no, I take that back. I, I take that back. Sorry, I do, yeah.
Thanks, John.
Oh, they kind of run the gamut, seven twenty-five, seven eighty, six hundred. Uh, that's us, sorry. Thirteen, thirteen fifty on the high end.
Typically a four.
Four season, times their user fee.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, usually a four, yeah.
For second discussion on it. I think at that point, if we second it and start discussing it, then we literally have to vote on an increase.
Well, that's what I wanna clarify. So on the agenda, it is a vote to increase athletic user fees. And we could still have a discussion on it. We can table it or we can vote it down and reintroduce it another time. And there's a lot of different options, but we need the motion before we, unless we table it.
But if the superintendent can survive the next year's sports with creation from Gil's mind, and Mr. Havlin makes sure that all of the major clubs at the high school are collecting fees, aren't we going to offset some funds? Aren't we gonna offset some monies?
Clarification on surviving.
Yeah.
We're surviving by taking from another part of the operating budget that's already been committed in the operating budget. So this year we, we put a freeze on
Okay.
to be able to pay for, you know, to pay, to pay the transportation bills basically. So, it's the cost of a teacher and I, I mean, when you, when you frame it like that, not that we're not gonna cut a teacher, but I'm just, in terms of the cost, so.
To Tasha's point, is, is, if you took it from Peter, is, is Paul, is, is that the chapter seventy funds?
Right. But it, I.
Not the shell game.
Yeah, yeah.
No, so, let me think out loud on the motion and then I think it'll make a little bit more sense.
Okay.
So, what it, we'll just start with this and then everybody can vote no if they hate this. But, um, if we make a motion that we vote to increase athletic user fees by the figure of a hundred dollars based on an intention to request that that increase be funded by excess chapter seventy funds.
I should repeat that, I'm sorry.
I would, um, suggest that we take a vote to increase athletic user fees to two hundred and fifty dollars with the understanding and expectation that we would request that the town pay the one hundred dollar increase out of the excess chapter seventy funds that will be received earmarked.
So we're, we're voting to kind of hold the money, but then we're gonna replenish it with chapter seventy funds?
I just would ca, I just would caution that it's an operating budget expense and not, it's not a thing. It's not a one-time expense. I, I do get worried about that.
So what I'm trying to do is motion to the town that we have a need, but also get that need funded without having a, I don't know what the vote's gonna be. So I, I'd like to put it forward in a way that we have a potential funding source without having a losing vote. And then you're walking away with a hundred and fifty dollars.
So wait, I'm just trying to understand, Tasha. So you're saying we'll increase the user fee. And so will they collect the increased user fees in September?
No, not from the parents. Cause when does chapter seventy come in?
August, is it August?
Well, I mean, yeah, when's our first payment? I don't know, but.
It's August.
Yeah, August.
Like on the books.
I don't know when that actually comes in, yeah.
Parents are paying one fifty. The additional one hundred is being paid by the town out of the chapter seventy funds that have to be earmarked for education.
The, the town has shown an unwillingness to commit, and I'm not in a negative way, that, to, to commit that money into the operating budget. And I'm very worried about mechanics. Like we're not, I'm very worried that we're not gonna see that money. Because with that, at the end of that scenario, let's, let's just ask them to raise the operating budget, you know? And that's not gonna happen. I mean, we've gone, we've gone back and forth about this, so. A little, I'm a little worried about the mechanics of it, but I appreciate, you know, I appreciate what you're trying to say, so.
What about sort of back to what I was saying before of like a sort of a multi-pronged approach? The two fifty covers it, right? Like, there would be no gap at two fifty this year.
Right.
There's still escalation being worried about.
Yeah, yeah. Long-term, yeah.
Two fifty covers the gap this year. And which is what if we grew into it a little bit? So what if we backed off the two fifty a little bit? So if ultimately we were trying to get to three hundred, we're at one fifty. What if we go to two twenty-five? Knowing there's still a gap. And some of that gap, again, it's like, I, the words are hard here, but some of it is one-time-ish. Uniforms clearly aren't one-time, but you can choose year to year whether you pay for those or not. So if we get.
But it's every sport, you know, these guys.
I know, but like, there's a, there's a, I'm sure.
And this gap right now, as he said, is transportation. We don't even have uniforms in. It's an, it's an ideal thing we want to have in our budget. We as a school should be putting the uniforms on our kids as a necessary item.
But the, the gap here says it's one hundred eighty-one thousand.
What?
No, no, that's.
One thirty-one.
One thirty-one.
That included like a uniform replacement budget, though, yeah.
Eight oh seven versus six seventy-five.
Our, our actual deficit this year without having a uniform budget, so take that away is roughly seventy-five thousand.
Yeah, so that's sort of what I was getting at, is if we can, if we can build into the operating budget closer to the seventy-five thousand, then we take the, a piece of it, there's gonna be more than that in chapter seventy. And there's gonna be other projects we're gonna want. But a piece of that chapter seventy money, assuming it comes through, covers the one-time-ish pieces, the uniforms.
The uniforms.
And then also in November, December, we're preparing ourselves for a conversation with the council about this whole issue. And if we do all three of those things, then it's a more, it's a more palatable change for the parents. We have a short-term bridge in a one-timeable, logical way for this year. And we're positioning the conversation about the philosophical supporting of the program as part of our annual budget. And then as we go into the next budget cycle, we're gonna be having a conversation about the, the full deficit, right? So that we can ultimately get this line item to eight oh seven. And really, like, John, I don't speak for you, but it's not, we're not talking about massive allocations here, but we can have that conversation. And then we go into next year, we've at least chipped away at the problem. So if the, if we can't get it and the council just says, I hear ya, there's other priorities. That line item's gonna be that line item. We're like, okay, fine. We chipped away at it. I get into two twenty-five and then we sit here next year and we say, did we see a meaningful change? What is the future forecast of the town? Do we need to take it up a little bit higher to, to fully cover the gap? It sort of gives us a way to make progress and leaves options. It also holds us accountable to have the hard conversations that need to be had as part of the budget cycle, I guess is what I'm trying to say.
I just don't like user fees.
I don't like them either, but I mean, you bring them up this year, you, if. I don't like them either, but I mean, you bring them up this year, you, if, God forbid the budget comes in and it's less than level service, at least you say that, like, we know athletics is fine now because we, we raised our fees, we were due diligent, like, you're going to have to go somewhere else, where, like, if we don't, and you see this gap already, they go, like, well, you guys didn't even, you guys have been paying for your athletes, so you, you guys got to take it in the teeth. I mean, I'd be proactive and say, we've covered athletics, we should be covering theater as well, but I'm saying, like, we should have all these things, because I have a feeling, the budget next year, based off early projections, is, you know, we may be less than level service, from what some state people have told me, that we should be prepared for, and this is one of the ways I think you are prepared, is if you have a robust athletic budget that covers it from the parents, you know, it's, not touching it because it's already, that's already paid for by the people using it.
Yeah.
Just, something that Kid was talking about earlier, I just want to make sure we're thinking through, and when we think about raising user fees for all of sports, especially by amount of $75, which sticks at me symbolically, when we have an existing $75 user fee that we are not charging other groups, Kid asked about that earlier. I understand, of course, a user fee for music, or theater, or other major endeavors doesn't affect the athletic budget, but it does help if it is involved with, as we said, the movement of money, operating budget. I just want to understand if that was, if that was, it wasn't truly addressed, the idea of, is that reasonable? Earlier, you mentioned not wanting to charge the fee, I understand that, but thinking about charging people who haven't been charged at all $75 versus asking for more money from one group.
I don't know if the high school has a choice. Is it a school committee policy that they're supposed to be collecting the fees?
I don't know, I guess I'm asking that question about how that, how that affects the conversation. I know it's not athletics, but it, I can understand people, people having a problem with inequities of, of us not fully enforcing certain fees based on whether you like to play baseball or you like to sing.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, I don't, wouldn't characterize it as a, a lack of enforcement. It's, I was here on the tail end of the original conversations seven years ago, when we had started talking about user fees and the allocation. It's a challenge and execution. The, the communities that represent performance arts weren't as heavily involved in the conversations. Athletics is always involved, youth athletics is a whole system. And so, over the years, we talked about the inequity that, you know, that Kid was talking about, and you just brought up again, so why is it that student athletes have to pay, and we make sure that they do? And how is it that other students who have a music fee assigned aren't paying? And there's a lot that goes into it, it's, it's a complex situation, because we don't have a sense of how it is displayed in that. It seems like athletics and communities in athletics, we talk about the, the comp information that we have, $1,000 to play one sport in other communities, athletic families are upfront and ready, able and willing to pay because they do, and we just haven't had the same success with families. And so, I think if it's another opportunity to reassert the expectation, then in turn, especially coupled with the recent investment in performance arts, we've elevated that to a different level within our schools, so maybe this is a timely conversation to, to reassert that. But it hasn't been a lack of, or an indifference in, in collection of uniforms, it's just been a different challenge.
I, I think we should table the vote, Tasha, because I, I'd like to see what chapter 70 presents, and I think the administration should do the due diligence in the mechanics of that and how they're able to use it, and then we, I think then we'd have a solid answer.
The only thing I'm concerned about is timing, because our next meeting isn't until August, so it's kind of last minute for people to have to pay.
Could we do a, could we do a quick virtual one, once we get those answers, though? Do an online vote, as long as you pose.
I don't know what the rules are right now about virtual, anybody know?
You can do that.
Can we do virtual, yeah? Back to the, I really feel like we're, it's a bit of a red herring, I, I just don't want to rely on this chapter 70 money, I just, I've never seen it. And at most, at most, what I'd, I'd aim for is it, for it to be set aside in a, some kind of account, almost like they did with the override. Remember, they had that one-time money in the override? And maybe we set that aside for a uniform replacement for the next five years or six years, right? But I, I just think that, I, I get really concerned about that. We can certainly wait and try to get, try to get some answers, I just don't know we're going to get a clear answer on it in time.
And it's not, like, we know it's not sustainable.
Yeah.
No, it's not, but if, if we, if it gets us through 24, 25, and then we, next, next year, we sit here and we're starting to talk about the operating budget, and, like, I think most of us are in favor of incorporating this, then it becomes a moot, it becomes a moot, moot topic, then, I mean, so.
I understand.
Can I jump in on that, just what you said? So, to help further answer that question, what, another part of the inequity is that, the chart that John shared before in terms of 807, none of that, as far as I know, reflects ongoing annual expenses for music and band, right? And so, that's why this is complicated, because we're talking about this in the, in the lens of athletics, but we're really talking about funding extracurriculars. And so that changes the conversation, because you add, I don't know what band uniforms cost, but the 807, plus extra member care, but the, the, the Friends of Music are the, probably the strongest, most vibrant booster club, and music does its own thing, puts in sales, they clean up lawns, there's a ton of activity. So, that just kind of adds to the, to the, the conversation about how and why things have worked the way they work, how and why the community and the community wanted them to work seven years ago, and how that turned different, because they're not represented on that. And so we have to think more broadly, I think, in terms of extracurricular, in order to start that conversation. That changes the number.
I think to John's point, if a portion, if it's legal, a portion of those chapter 70 funds can, can be for a portion of extracurricular, such as uniform replacement, and we should be deeply embarrassed that the band kids don't, haven't had uniforms in that many years. You know, that's, okay, and that's, that's a big chunk of money that we just, that we just saved, quote unquote, but we got to know the mechanisms behind it. I don't, I don't have those answers.
Yeah, I think for me, it's philosophically difficult that we're sitting here talking only about an athletic, athletics budget, when, and then I hear things about band with 20-year-old uniforms.
We, we could have members of the band in uniforms that their parents wore. I mean, that's just.
Yeah. They also, they also don't currently have an operating deficit, which is why we're here tonight. So, transportation is a significant, significant budget driver for any high school in America for athletics. We either need to find a way to pay for it every year, or not. I mean, that, that's, that's why we're here tonight. I, I mean, I know it's, it's, it's a really tricky, complicated topic, but we have an operating deficit, trying to avoid having another one, and so, you know, that's kind of, I don't know how to move it forward or not, but.
Just to move it along, I'll make a motion to up the, the sports athletic fees to 250 with a family cap of 1,000.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion?
I already know how I'm voting, so I don't need to discuss it.
Yeah, I mean, it's good to just vote on it to see where it goes, you know, at this point.
Keith's thinking, so let's give him a second.
Well, only in the, like, I understand the symbolism that Charlie brought up, 100 bucks is, is the whole problem, and I just think that we can, we can meter back some, and just, like, show a progressive way of thinking of, like, tackling problems over time. It get, it closes the, the gap, it takes a dent, but gives us, because once we go to 250, like, I, I can't imagine a scenario where we go backwards from there. Like, I just, it, I don't know, like, I just can't imagine that scenario. Whatever we get to, we're going to stay there.
For 15 years, so.
15 years, yeah.
Basically, so if it's.
But what I, I guess what I'm, what I'm saying is, the projection we're hearing from these guys is 300 is really what's the number we should go to, to cover us for the next foreseeable time, right? That's what I heard.
Yeah, yeah, I, again, ba, again, you have to kind of extrapolate, right, because you get the family cap and the participation numbers, but if you kind of use the same ratios of what we're collecting and how many people are using, 250 would, would kind of get us, would get us whole.
This year.
Yeah, yeah, but long-term, obviously, we would, transportation in particular is going to go up. We just, no. Matter of fact, our last year of our contract is next year, so we can expect that to, to rise.
250, then you can chip away at the, the operating budget, you know?
You got to think of it the other way, though. If you increase that number, you're going to get less participants.
Yeah.
A hundred percent.
I would assume we have some sort of waiver, right, for, for families?
We do. We have a lot of, we, we provide a lot of waivers, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Well, you have a waiver, but you don't have a sliding scale.
What do you mean by that?
So, they have a waiver.
Oh, you're either waived or not waived.
Yeah, you're the waiver or not, it's not, it's not gradient.
Yeah, yeah.
So, hey, I can afford this, so.
There's no way to get to that.
I think we could, I don't think that's on the table for tonight.
I mean, I, I will say, in Sharon, when we went from 250 to 375, there was not one blink of a change in participation.
Right. 125 in Sharon is not 100 in North Otterboro. Just, just in the interest of, I don't, we all know that, but.
I, I have to say, and look, I don't want to, this shouldn't be a discussion of how much can we take before we knock participants out, so I don't want to even have that discussion, really. I just don't honestly believe that if we went up 75 or $100, we're going to have a massive drop-off. I'm not even sure we'd have any drop-off.
I think, uh.
Yeah, I don't, so I guess my point is, I don't know that that should be the, the yardstick that we measure it by, and just try to find a number that we're not going to get a drop-off on.
And it's talking about today, but also talking about tomorrow, and, and talking about 250, I can understand that, talking about increased, or enhanced efforts at revenue sources for the future, as the future gets more expensive, especially with facilities and scoreboards and things, partnerships, you know, I would be in favor of that, of, of trying to, you know, really rethink how we're funding these things, or, not rethink, but offer additional, you know, pathways to funding as things continue to get more expensive, so that we aren't next year going, all right, now it's 300. It's hard, it's hard to go from 150 15 years ago to 250, and then one year later go to 300, because then people are going to just expect to see 500 by the time their kid graduates.
Although there is some value in communication-wise, just forecasting for people, like, so it's one jump, you know, it's a two, I'm making this up, but it's a, you know, two-year increment, we're going to go up X, and then we're going to go up another X, you know?
Honestly, that, when I first saw this on the agenda, that's where my mind went, was $25 this year, $25 next year, $25, and we get to where we want to go over four or five years. That's where my mind went.
Which, I think if we, again, first time looking at this from a school committee standpoint, remember myself speaking individually, but seeing all of a sudden the numbers, oh, we're, you know, we're this short, this year, we need to take action now, it, it feels like this is something we could have sort of seen coming and done incrementally as we went, before we start today going, we have a problem.
Yeah, but, so here's the thing, though, okay, you can't have it both ways, because we've been getting by, right, and we're always pushed to basically get by, and we've had enough flexibility over the last X amount of years to end without a deficit, right? But again, it, there's a, there's a tipping point, and we've, we've hit it, you know, and so, we didn't have a deficit last year, we have a deficit this year. So I guess, you can't have it both ways. We're always, we always, we always ask, like, spend your own money first before you ask for more money. That's what we've been doing, and so, it's unfortunate, but it's also 15 years in the making, you know, and so.
But I think that's where Charlie, and sort of what I was saying, too, because you are, you're damned if you do and you're damned if you don't. But if the school committee says, hey, we know inflation happens, so we're going to implement a parent fee, and the policy is going to be that the fee is going to go up 3% every year, or $5 every year, or whatever, then you're not dealing with it.
Well, that's a different story, yeah, that's.
Right, and, and it's not getting us to these points where all of a sudden you're talking about whacking a family, $300 a kid, $100, $100, $100.
We're in a two and a half position already, like, you're already behind the eight ball, so if we're like, we're going to raise it by inflation, we're going to be, okay, we're still 60,000.
So, so the real answer would be do, do it to 250 now, and, and, and raise it by $5 every year forever.
Or you, or you just increase your operating budget every single year after a thing for athletics to cover that, so you don't have to.
So, I, I'm just throwing out ideas. I know we have some property tax write-off for senior citizens if they do community service around town. I wonder if any of the scoreboard operators, ticket takers, any of that kind of stuff could be added into that, that tax relief program? I don't know that they are or aren't already, but I'm curious, because that's a $15,000 item. I'd be curious to have a conversation with the town about the $30,000 of uniform replacement, if we could earmark chapter 70 and create a fund similar to the, the special ed stabilization fund. So I guess it's up to 45 at best, and just keep chipping it away, chipping away at it from there. I'm just so strongly anti-fees because so many parents and so many families are struggling so much at this point that just one more, like, you know, parents are crying over the cost of groceries and trying to feed their families, and so the idea of a parent having to choose between, I buy juice boxes and Oreos, or my kid plays football, it just doesn't sit well with me.
I agree.
And I think there's something to be said for the, like, we have the subsidy, but, but so many of these kids that are in the position where the money's going to matter, they're not going to go home and ask their parents to fill out the waiver or whatever, they're just not going to play.
But it's, it goes beyond that, because, like I said, the waiver is a yes or no, it's not a gradient, and so, like, you could be $10 over, and you'd get nothing. You don't just pay the $10 that you could afford, and that, that's a whole other philosophical discussion, but.
And Nick, we have no authority over booster clubs. Like, you can't say, I need all my booster clubs to raise money this year for, for uniform replacement.
I.
Because they're an independent, right?
Again, right, and, but they've taken that upon themselves, because they know there is no athletic budget for uniforms.
I just wonder if we all, we targeted all of our booster clubs to take one of the things off of our plate, kind of like what Tasha just recommended with taking the ticket takers or something off our plate. You know, it's a big chunk of money.
Yeah, it's, as you said, basketball doesn't have a booster, so who is going to get together and buy the uniforms for basketball if there is no boosters? Tennis, same thing, no boosters.
Right.
You know, so it's.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think we should table it.
I think it has to be, until we get some answers.
Tasha, maybe, like, I understand the pressure on these guys, like, maybe with your discretion, you could call us together for a virtual meeting in July, if we have the information and we can.
Yeah.
What if, what information are we going to have? And, like, what are, what are we, what are we going to look for?
What you can do with those chapter 70 funds.
Yeah, yeah.
And I know you're opposed to that, John.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm only opposed to using it for operating budget expenses. I'm not opposed to using it as a, as a way to set aside money for the next five, six years for uniform replacement. That doesn't pay our transportation bills, so we have a deficit. So I'm just going to come back to my first thing I said, so just know that we're going into next year with a deficit.
But the uniforms are just an example, so I don't want to get stuck on that red herring. I'd rather have an itemized list of really what is our deficit on specific line items. So, you know, you keep going back to transportation. I don't know what the increase is from FY23, and I don't want to sound like John Simmons, because I know he always looks for 23, 24, 25. I didn't ask you for that before this meeting, but I think that would be important for us to know, so that we can really see what that trend is and have that conversation. But I don't really understand what, you're giving deficits from specific categories, but it's just sort of like off the cuff.
Virtually everything is not off the cuff at all.
No, 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 what I'm just saying, like, we don't have that number.
That, that list, with the exception of uniform replacement, correct me if I'm wrong, Nick, and a slight adjusted kind of estimate for how much it costs us to buy essential equipment are our exact costs, period. The only, we put the uniform replacement in because you should have a uniform replacement budget for an athletic program for high school.
Then just so that I understand.
Everything else is our actual, our actual costs.
Right.
So it's not, yeah.
All I'm saying is reflecting back to you that you've brought up transportation repeatedly, so I'm trying to understand your priorities as I look through this, as items that we can focus on for other sources of revenue, because it sounds like other things may be stable, and understandably so, because they're small numbers, but if there are larger numbers like transportation, which is 110,000, then let's prioritize that for something to work on. I'm doing that so that I understand where our priorities are in gathering information before this next meeting.
I mean, I think this, just for the interest of time, though, it's everything. I mean, like, officials are probably going up. I mean, there's less officials out there, they're going to go up. I mean, essential equipment, I'm guaranteeing you that 37.5 number is probably about $15,000 short of what it actually takes. I think you probably did a very conservative number, if I'm guessing right. So, I mean, I think what this is, I think this is a very watered-down budget, and if you really wanted to, I think this would be well over, not a million, but I think it would be close to.
Oh, yeah.
It could be. I mean, I just think this is very watered down to your bare bones. I mean, and this was just example, like, two or three years ago, they raised $20,000 for a wrestling mat, great thing. They did it, you know, like that, but there was no plan to ever replace it. Like, that can't happen, like, if a basketball hoop breaks tomorrow, I don't think you have the budget to replace the backboard, you know, like, we got the
I don't think you have the budget to replace the backboard, you know, like, we're gonna have to take it from somewhere else, the budget, you know, these are realistic things that, like, should be in a budget to handle things like that that happened, so, I mean, I just think if we take chapter seventy money, you're literally just punting the ball to further down the road, because the problem doesn't go away, because you have one-time funds, you know, for a gap for your uniforms. Well, that's just one part of the problem, but.
But, but, but my, I guess my point on this is that we've gotta solve the structural deficiency in the budget, no doubt about it, and we can solve it one of two ways. We can make a substantial increase to the user fees, solve the structural deficit. We can work with the council and the manager on this line item, structurally solve the deficit. One way or the other, it's gotta be structurally solved, because I think what you were just saying is, like, let's take a run at the operational budget first. Let's treat this deficit as a one-time deficit, because we're basically, in my mind, we're committing, basically. We're saying, we're, we're gonna talk to the town about the budget first. If we get it there, problem solved. If we don't get it there, then literally, when we vote our budget next April, we should vote our budget, or May, or whatever, we should vote our budget and vote the increase to the user fees.
I mean, I just think when you're talking about the operating budget, this is priority item number nine, probably, on my list, to be honest with you. Like, there's so many other things that I would be like, well, I'd rather see another adjustment in the counselor than people pay more for sports, and that's where, like, I just think, like, you plug that thing with it, with the two fifty, and then go try to build in, but I'm telling you what, at least personally, it's not high on my priority list to plug this with operating budget money, because I think there's so many other higher needs for the district that we saw that earlier, like, when we had those lists of things we wanted to fund, like, I look at this and I go, well, two fifty, or an extra principal at, assistant principal at AMVIT, I'll take the.
So, if we know, like, individually, as voters of this right now, we're sitting here, and philosophically, we look at this and we know that this isn't in our top ten, and there's ten other things that we're gonna be asking to be remedied in the fall, if we all know that today, then you're right, we should vote today, and, and, and increase the, the user fee, because it does have to be structurally fixed.
But we've already been, we've already been, we've already been through that. The administration's already told us what their priorities are for adjustment counselors, and this need and that need, and we asked for a prioritized list, so going into twenty-four, twenty-five, the administration should have the staff that, that they can work with for the school year. Right? Am I wrong? Did we, didn't we just do that? We, we, we said, you guys presented, you guys took it to your principals, and you said, what are our priorities? And you came back to us, and we said, okay, well, this is a list of priorities, but what are the priorities within this list? And you came back and, you know, so my thinking, Ethan, is that we're, we're walking into next year having the staff that we need to have a successful year.
But if I remember right, we didn't fund all those priorities. They gave us three, and we said, here's eighty thousand dollars.
Yeah, we funded one, yeah.
If that's, if, was that about it?
Well, we, well, we got, we got essentially one extra position.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, it was wonderful. It's right, yeah.
We didn't fund the, the top three of that list, though, right?
No.
No.
So, they have the staff to.
But we are, but, I mean, to give, but we're well-positioned next year, I mean.
Now, I'm just saying, like, it would still, if we went back to, like, priorities, I would still think this wouldn't even make your top list of priorities to fill this gap. Well, it would make it, because you need to pay the buses.
Yeah.
It's not flexible, these.
Right.
I'll defer to you guys, I'm ready to vote, but you guys can decide if you want.
Just wanna go back to why I'm trying to prioritize even within this list, because I think it's much easier to have a conversation if we understand exactly where, like, is transportation is apparently more important than the uniform replacement, for example, so where do we place our priorities when we're communicating it to the town in the future?
Well, no matter what uniform you're wearing, if you can't get there, you can't, you can't play.
I don't wanna get hung up on uniforms, so, like, just visually, like, for now, cross it off. The rest of the list is what it costs to run a high school athletic program. Not robust, just to run it. And so, that's, that's it. I mean, that's the story. It's like, that's, and it's, to Ethan's point, it's a pretty conservative look at it, but we could run the program, we could get the kids to and from their games, we could pay officials, you know, we could supervise crowds and pay the coaches, right, period, which is awesome. So, that's, that, that's where the structural deficiency comes in. Uniforms, I don't want uniforms to, I don't wanna derail the conversation, just, just for that.
The gap you have to cover, this coming fiscal year, and again, you're gonna cover it.
You'll cover it, yeah, I'm, yeah, yeah.
You'll hold expenses, you'll do other things, you'll cover it.
Yep.
But it's like, between seventy-five and a hundred.
Yeah, sixty-five and seventy-five, I think, yeah, 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 right now.
Oh, seventy-five, that's the gap that, that will, will exist this year, that you will have to cut in other places to resolve. That's my point. Everybody's looking at me, there's nothing else.
Yeah, but I think we are punting for one year. I think we should punt for one year, and then putting it into the operating budget. It's not, to Pete's point, it's not athletics, it's extracurricular. It's the whole student. Going to a basketball game at seven o'clock is part of your academic day. Going to band practice after school is part of your day, just like math is, chemistry, flex block, whatever, it's part of your day. So, it's the whole student, it's, it's part of your, it's part of your school day. So, I think we need to pun, find a way to fill that gap for this one year, and then have our discussions next year, and who knows, maybe, maybe the town manager, we're, we're speaking on his behalf. We don't, we don't know if he philosophically thinks about this, he could be in complete agreement.
So, it would be on your top three list to fund next year, is, I guess, the question to bring up again, like, if, if we were to even be lucky enough to be funded more, the level of service would be on your top three?
I don't know if it'd be on my top three, but it's a need.
It's a huge need, I agree, and I think it should be the operating, I'm just being realistic, that it's not gonna be.
I think the problem is, it's, in reality, it's non-negotiable. Like, we're, we're going to incur these expenses. It's just, are you deliberate when you build the budget in the beginning to short something else and, and fund this, because you're gonna pay for it? Or are you, uh, like, we all know, the school's budget is a big budget. There are puts and takes that happen throughout the year, we all know that, and that's basically what you've relied on the last couple of years, is that you sort of fund it at a base level, you've got a gap that's been growing, and you just hope that the puts are in your favor more than they're not. This past year, they weren't, so you had to implement expense freezes to close the gap. But I guess that's the thing, is like, it's sort of, it's like a, I don't know, it's like a fake, it's a fake prioritization in a way, because this is, if you run the program, you have to get the kids there. It's happening. So, what the real choice will be is, if that adjustment counselor, or the principal, or whatever those things are, do we create enough, is there extra to be able to make sure that the money doesn't have to get siphoned to this? But I guess, Tasha, back to what I said before, I, I think I'm ready to vote on this, but, that being said, I would love for you and John, just, I, I would just love to understand philosophically where the town manager's head would be on this going into the year, both in terms of the short term, covering the gap this year, and in the longer term, as part of our budget discussion, in, like, going into the baseline, you know, I would love to resolve it tonight, but I also would really like that information.
Right, but that's also why I'm trying to gather, I would like to be able to go in, I like threes, because I think people listen to three things you say at a time, and then after that, it's kind of gobbledygook. So, I'd like to be able to go in and say, we need these three things funded. It also gives the town manager the opportunity to say, we funded these three items for high school athletics, which is, it's a good narrative for the town. The town will get behind that and support it.
Judge, I, I don't, I don't wanna give up the school committee's authority to devote a bottom-line budget. I, I don't wanna start cherry-picking necessarily with, with the, the town, but there's one move, I think, that's possible, because we do have a separate transportation appropriation, you know, so I, maybe it's not three, maybe it's one, but maybe it's just that. It's, okay, can we talk about just also paying for athletic transportation out of the transportation appropriation? You still gotta pay for it somehow, but it's very concrete, and it, it gives us that flexibility to respond, you know, to respond to the increases and inflation or whatever, so I don't know, just something, something to think about. I don't wanna start saying to the town, oh, you get to pick what we fund. This is, this is just a random example of cost of operations, you know what I mean?
Right, well, and I wanna make it clear, I'm not saying that they should be picking, but we're also coming with this expense after the budget and asking the parents to front it, and that does not sit well with me, so that's where I say, well, what other options do we have? And we have, as far as I'm concerned, I have no other bucket of money other than the town, and if I'm gonna go to the town and I'm gonna beg for money, beggars can't be choosers. So, if I give him three options, and he says, I'll give you this one and this one, thank you, that's more money than I had when I walked in here, and that's, that's as simple as it is for me.
Yeah.
And I don't think that that's necessarily an appropriations choice, I think that's trying to make ends meet in a time that we can't right now, and nothing more than that.
I would just say, I would beg for money elsewhere.
At, at the risk of sounding pessimistic, there's no more money in the operating budget coming from the town or the schools this year, period. It's not happening.
It's too late.
It's just, it's just too late, yeah, and, and that's not a bad thing, it's just not a, I don't mean, that's not a negative, it's just like, it's a fact, and so, the, the only, the only hope is that you have this one, quote-unquote, one-time money, which we've yet to understand the mechanics of, that may or may not end up with us allowing, us being allowed to purchase something, a project, so I just, I wanna get the operating budget, like, they're not increasing our operating budget, which is not gonna happen. So, you know, if we wanna focus on that chapter seventy money, even if it's a year, two years, uniforms, whatever, that's a, that's a different conversation, but I just wanna be.
I think that's the same conversation, because that's what I'm talking about, saying, let's find the money that they have, and let's use it for educational purposes. Chapter seventy funds are educational funds. We are entitled to them. I've had that conversation with Mike Borg, hand it to me, we'll use it. We have plenty of places to use it, but I'm not gonna go in and say, I want that money, and I, I just don't think that that's a, um, there's a lot of integrity in that conversation to just say, hand me the money, because it's ours. I think we have an obligation to be able to explain to the taxpayers why that money is ours, and also, for me, the purpose would be to avoid having parents have an increased cost for their kids to be able to play sports. I don't want kids having to pay for theater or art, either. I think it's part of school.
I mean, I don't think we should have to tell them why we need the money. I don't ask them where the money that's appropriated to the DPW, why it's going to the DPW, I mean, it's just a philosophical, but.
There is a hierarchy to how much it's made.
You can ask. That's fine with us.
Next cycle, give us the number you need. So, we're gonna table, we have a motion and second, and are we gonna vote? I, at this point.
I think we can vote, it doesn't prevent us from voting again, if information or situations change. I don't wanna take a vote on whether we wanna vote. Everybody's quiet, so.
There is a motion that was second on the floor, correct?
Yeah.
Alright, so, call for a vote.
You can't amend that to table, it's.
We can withdraw it, but.
Alright, Keith, you wanna go first, or you want me to say it the other way?
No, it's a.
We need, we need the motion repeated.
Yeah, can you please, yeah.
Who made the motion?
I made the motion for, the motion to raise athletic fees to two hundred and fifty per sport in a thousand-dollar family cap, or is it for a specific, being revisited a year? Is that part of this, or?
No.
No. And the caveat that hockey has their separate fee.
Yeah.
Wait a second. I don't remember who seconded.
Ethan already have a second, he's just restating it.
He's just restating.
I just didn't remember having a second. Alright, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any nays, I'm a nay.
I'm a nay.
And any absences?
I am a.
Drama.
That's four-two, right, because Sarah's not here.
He hasn't voted yet.
For discount.
Breathing.
I just think it's the wrong number, so I'm a nay.
So, we're one, two, three, three, we're tied.
Alright, next one, maybe.
I do, I do, for the record, want to revisit this topic, though.
I think we should.
Oh, it has to be.
Alright.
So, just to be clear, communication going out for fall sports registration, which is now, for the next two months, that user fee stays the same at one fifty and.
Where, where are we, though? Seriously, I don't mean to, to beat this, but the collection form has a line item for two other fees. Like, I, look, that wasn't my school committee or my decision, but we should, like, we should make a college effort to collect those fees if they're on that form.
There are some people who do pay the fee.
So, that's almost worse, so then, so the person who, like, voluntarily checks the box and pays, it's paying it, and then other people who get, like.
We'll just message it out. No, it's fine.
It, it's a policy.
Yeah, see, that's my point.
Okay, well, we don't, I'm not asking you if you have to follow the policy, it's a policy.
That's my point, yeah, that's what I'm saying, like, we should.
So.
I wasn't here when it got implemented, I just would say, I think it's a little murky as to who we're supposed to be charging, are we charging the chess club kids?
Well, no, because you saw the form, there's a.
Is it just, is it just theater or music? Are we charging?
Yeah, it's somewhere, it's.
Theater is seventy-five dollars for each direction, music is seventy-five dollars for each.
We have a special meeting on all these in July.
It's a hundred and fifty dollars for clubs, but clubs is not defined in that. And I know that they, they took out all of the, like, the mad and sad when, as scandalous on the committee, he took, he made a motion to not charge kids to be part of those clubs, but all the other clubs were supposedly being charged.
So, it's just theater and music, basically, you're saying?
Theater, music, and clubs, clubs, but it's not defined in that, in that message, what the, what the clubs are.
I mean.
But I can go back in minutes and tell you what clubs they can be.
The logic was, they didn't want people to be paying not to drunk drive, so they removed that.
Yeah, yeah.
But I think we just need to have a meeting just on this.
Yeah, well, and all those, like, academic-related clubs that really have no added costs, like.
Should be reflected in the budget to run the thing.
I have a constructive suggestion, so I can move that along. Why don't we formulate those questions to our chair? She can get more information from the administration about any specifics relating to the fees of these non-athletic things, and then, at that moment, we have a constructive conversation for meeting. Right here, we just hypothesize what's actually going on, and we don't know.
I know, but at the end of the day, it really has to be remedied, because there's a school policy, that, school committee policy that's not being followed at the end of the day, so that's why, like, it's kind of important that, like, it gets remedied, because what's the next policy that somebody doesn't wanna follow, you know, so, like, it's just, we just gotta clean it up sooner than later, because now we know what exists, let's just clean it up. And I leave that to the chair when she finds time to organize that.
If it's that clear, let's just, we'll just do it. I mean, I don't, I'm with you. If it's theater, oh, the, it's the clubs, I guess, that's the, the nebulous thing, yeah, yeah, yeah. I think we're going down a slippery slope, but we'll, we'll certainly look into it. I just, you talk about participation, you know, when you're talking about charging a kid to be in the best buddies program, or participate in robotics, we're going down a real slippery slope of, like, of what public education means, you know? So, it's, it's tough.
I don't think we should be charging.
I do, I, we need to clarify, we need to clarify, yeah, yeah. No, no, I understand. I just wanna say, like, I just wanna make sure that we, it's the same philosophy, no matter what, you know?
We have to, there's two things that are, that are obvious, and they're, to me, they're pretty equivalent. An athletic team, a major production of the play, participation in the band, like, those things all feel very equivalent to me. And there are specific line items, if I'm understanding you right, for those. The general bucket of clubs, I think we need to understand what that is, and just, look, we, that needs to just be a separate conversation to David's point, and we just need to clar, clarify what is defined as a, as a participatory club versus all of the other, like, they're clubs, I know, like, we've gotta get better language, because nobody wants best buddies.
No, no, no.
There's so much, there's so much variety in it, so that, you're right, like, so the things that, that helps to make an equivalent between athletics and theater is that they've been around and understood for decades. But the, the idea of other clubs, like, we, like, we haven't been able to establish a plan that works, so there's like a one, I think it's one fifty, and it's such a, um, it's a, it's a one-time fee, and you can be in as many clubs as you want, but those, those clubs change, like, we have the Bear Club, and it's been popular for the past couple of years, but that might go away, like, in fact, we don't even have an adult who's going to run it next year. We have this organization, organized group of kids that do work on behalf of a club, and so some of these things are just there, they just exist, and they're just creating out of these temporary trusts and interests between kids and staff and the school. Like, I think I'm running their club next year, just because kids wanna do it. And so, like, how is it that I would charge them for it? And so, but that's the, that's the point, is that the original intent. And so what actually, that's the point, is that the original intent of the conversations from years ago were to organize, to try to organize our understanding of what kids do extracurricularly, put a price on it, and then be able to fund it through that price process. And so if, the familiar ones are, I guess, the low-hanging fruit, easy pieces, and we can just reassert and uphold that piece of it. But to John's point about the slippery slope, we are thriving because we're taking down the barriers to access to participation, and that's the direction we should continue to go in. And this is a very tough conversation tonight, because we want to fill that. And at the same time, we're building, potentially building structures that kind of prevents that or limits it for kids. Like, I even, like, here, I, just here myself, I've been spending the last month just walking around the school telling kids, asking kids, we need our kids to participate more in sports. And in doing that on behalf of just the interest of the school and making it like it was fifty years ago, what North Attleboro is so great. And now I feel a little guilty because of the potential idea that cost increases.
Well, we just wrote a gap, yeah.
No, I know, until that point. But I still feel conflicted about where we are with this whole piece, because I'm philosophically opposed to fees. I do think that they are part of the educational experience. I do think the lessons learned in them are incomparable to the rest of the school day, and most of them are those important lessons. And as soon as we start, like, undermining access to fees and not having a good plan in place for it, I worry about that. And North thrives on it, that's what North has, has been, grows a greater of the years. So I guess, yeah, I mean, we go right back to the draw, the world, it's posted, and then we're going to deal with the anticipated consequences of that. And then we'll have more information, and we can use that to make more decisions later on, although...
It's work, it's almost nine, so we're just going to try to approve what's remaining. The next item would be the school committee member community announcements. Charlie?
Yeah, in the interest of expediency, well, I just wanted to congratulate all the graduates this year. Several of the school committee members were there at the graduation, it was really well-executed. And also, kudos to the Principal Avalon and the entire staff, a really great event. And I'm glad music was brought up, because one of my favorite parts was watching this graduates jump out of the formation of graduates, run over and grab a flute, and, you know, in particular, some of the singers, just like a couple of school committee members, we were sitting near each other, and we were just like, wow. Like, just beyond high school talent level, and a really, really great show, all in all. One constructive criticism, let's raise that seal behind the stage higher, because it looked like Attleboro High School graduation. And I don't want to give them any credit, the word north was obscured because it's a circle. But no, really, it was a really, yeah, all my photos say Attleboro, and I was like, I got to Photoshop north in here somewhere. Just joking, but, but really, it was fantastic, and a lot of emotion from the parents in the field, and just a pretty un... Much better than my high school graduation, put it that way. And I also recently went to the Field Day Community School. I know another, Tasha's also a parent there, I was there as well. And it's pretty, pretty cool to see the kids running around and really enjoying the last couple of weeks of school here. And really thankful to a lot of the parent volunteers that put that thing on, that really go out of their way to make that a priority, because the kids felt pretty special, and it's a pretty, pretty great end-of-year celebration. And that's all for me.
Even?
Just two things, I was fortunate enough to be at the awards night ceremony with Tasha and Keith. I think it's just wonderful that, it's a great evening to acknowledge people's achievements as well as an opportunity to provide some financial scholarships to people that can, you know, that can assist them in their path to college. I just want to make a special note to the North Abba Foundation, which is a great group, I'm really providing, for the, providing funds for the, for the kids in our community. And that's a great, great thing for people to contribute to. And then just on a small note, I was there, not just as a school committee member, but I was secretary for my wife's foundation, the Cassie's Cause, and we were fortunate enough to give out some scholarships, totally four thousand dollars for kids pursuing mental health fields related, so that was a good thing. And the second thing I just want to say, and it's tied to why I wasn't at graduation night, is I was coaching for the second year in a row at the championships, Division Two down in Rhode Island, I'm the assistant coach. We finished second again, we lost in the finals, but that's two years ago for the boys volleyball. And the only reason why I state that is, it just makes me proud to know everywhere, not just Massachusetts, but everywhere, the hard work and sacrifice that the head coaches, the assistant coaches, and Skip's gone to, the athletic directors too as well. They just do a tremendous job. They don't get paid much, they take a lot of aggravation. But it's, it's very, it's a blessing that, that they can have this experience with the kids, and they really do learn. It's just not the sports stuff, they just learn to become good young adults, and that's very important. That's the most important lesson they can get from participating in sports, so I just want to pass that along.
So Sarah couldn't be here tonight, she asked me to read a little announcement. So the Pride Festival is on Saturday, June twenty-second, from two to six in front of Town Hall. There will be vendors, food, entertainment, speakers, and more. And I just wanted to say, the last couple of weeks have been unbelievable with the amount of activity with graduations and everything. We have two more wake-ups, everybody can do it, and we're almost there. But despite all that hard work, it's just phenomenal to see the graduations and the celebrations and the things that the kids have done and the awards that they're getting, it's just, it's like, every year, it blows my mind, the kids that come out of this town. So I wanted to congratulate all of them, their families, and obviously the teachers and staff for all that hard work that we get to see so clearly these last couple of weeks.
I'll be quick, I just want to congratulate the seniors, and I also want to congratulate all the employees that have retired recently. And everyone have a great summer.
Mine's pretty much the same, congratulations to our graduates, thank you to everyone who made graduation possible, especially the maintenance staff with the setup and the breakdown, many hours put in there. And obviously, I hope our staff and students have a safe summer.
Just on the graduation, echo all the thoughts and congratulations to the graduates. I will say, you know, I've been to a lot of graduations over the years, that was the best graduation I've ever attended, by far. So congratulations to everybody that put that together, hands down the best. And then two other things, I had students reach out to me recently as part of their civics projects. One group, Riley Brown, DeeDee Brown, Sarah Cristo, Grace Manning, were looking to raise awareness about food safety. And one of their observations was that actually the way our school system handles food safety is better than sort of the restaurant industry in general, based on their research. So they were advocating for legislation ultimately to raise the bar on every place else that serves food, to be more in line with, with North Attleboro school system.
Wow.
The other group, Olivia Nelson, Ally Clark, and Laura Hunt, I think they're all seniors. They are actually advocating for increased access to sex education. I talked to Michelle a little bit about it, and I understand there's, like, new state guidelines coming. So I promised both groups that I would just raise a little awareness at our meeting here tonight. Thank you.
Great. All right, so we'll move on to action items, bills, oh, sorry. Do you have an announcement? It's your second meeting, you probably are like, I don't know.
Congratulations to all graduates and our hard-working staff.
I also want to mention the town now has a food composting program, which I think actually would be a good partnership between the town and the schools when there's, we all know there's a lot of food waste in schools. So I think that would be a good thing for us to explore. But it's open to all residents and businesses if you are.
Sir, please.
I believe there is, I have to double-check what the fee is, but I believe there's a cost.
All right.
Two-hundred-and-fifty dollars. No. It's late, it's late. Too soon.
Hey, we'll taboo, John. We're moving on to the action items for bills dated May second, ninth, sixteenth, twenty-three, thirty, and June sixth, twenty-twenty-four. Do I have a motion to approve? Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion?
I'm going to abstain.
Any other discussion? All right, so we'll take it to a vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any nays, or, and one abstention. Take a motion to approve the minutes dated May seventh and thirteenth, twenty-twenty-four, do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
And any discussion?
We need an update for May seventh on the budget. I voted no, so we'll pass six zero, six one.
And with that friendly amendment or that notation, we take it to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any nays or abstentions? And that passes six one, I mean, six oh, sorry. And next up would be the vote to amend the fiscal year twenty-five budget to be in line with the town manager's approved budget of June tenth, twenty-twenty-four.
Don't have to do this.
No.
No, we're all set. Our vote last month was aligned, was already aligned with the final budget, so.
All right, so next would be the vote to approve the NAFT Education Support Professionals Contract, twenty-twenty-four to twenty-twenty-seven, as recommended by the ASP Negotiation Subcommittee. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? And we talked about this briefly last time, anyway, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any nays, abstentions, six zero. Be looking for a motion to approve the Food Service Workers Contract, twenty-twenty-four to twenty-twenty-seven, as recommended by the Food Service Negotiation Subcommittee, do I have a motion?
To move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
And any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any nays, any abstentions, motion carries, six zero. We have a discussion item, superintendent's evaluation.
No, I don't really have anything to say, other than I know you've all contributed to my evaluation, and I haven't read every word yet, but I really appreciate the feedback, and I make my annual statement that, you know, please don't hesitate throughout the year to provide feedback, as I talked to a lot, I talked to all of you quite a bit during the year, but if there's something specific that you'd like us to focus on, something specific you'd like us to change or modify, please don't hesitate. I think it's pretty, we had a pretty successful year. We were constantly in the mode of continuous improvements, and we'll continue just to work hard for, for our students and our staff. But I really appreciate your support, and it's been a great three years, I'm looking forward to a next run next year.
Next up, we have school committee meeting dates, they're at the end of your packet. I had a question for Mary, the one that's in yellow for election night, is that just...
Do you know whether you wanted to do it because it's election night?
Yeah, I would think we should probably move it.
Move it.
Can we do?
Oh, yes, yes.
I don't know how people feel about another night that week, or just if Tuesdays are it, maybe we can circulate an email.
I just have a question, when did we start going to Tuesday? Like, it was traditionally Monday, and then...
It went to Tuesday when Joe was in school, because he couldn't get here for Mondays, and I've just stayed with Tuesday since then.
Does the council have a, there was a conflict, I know why, we always met on the first Monday for reasons. I don't know if that went away with the new town charter, but there was like...
Our meetings are the second, our main meetings are the second and fourth Monday.
Okay, so there's no conflict.
Today, right, Finance Committee, which I think that can be...
There was a reason, though, that why we did, to avoid another meeting, I didn't know if we're conflicting with it or not.
I don't think so, we haven't so far.
Didn't it move from Mondays to Tuesdays, like, when the council formed, because the council started meeting on Mondays?
No, we always had the first Monday, even after that, it was...
We moved it last year because of Joe, because he had a class in Boston that went late, and he couldn't get here in time on Mondays.
It was the opposite week, though, right, like, so...
We are, we're the first Monday, you guys are second.
Second and fourth, yeah, so it worked.
Yeah, but this makes sense, because if John's not available on the second and fourth Monday, he must just keep it consistent to Tuesdays with some exceptions. If you want to do Wednesdays, I mean, it's like...
I've always advocated, both on council, but I thought it affected school committee for Mondays, because for professionals who travel, who want to serve on these committees, it's easier to block your week if you're meeting on Monday or Thursday and still make a business trip. I'm not currently in that position, so I could care less when we meet, but that was the logic on council. When there was a motion to move off of Thursdays, which was the traditional board selectmen day, we landed on Mondays for that reason, so that work, travel, professionals who travel could plan their agenda around a bookended meeting. Tuesdays, Wednesdays are right in the middle of the week. But I could care less.
I'll just leave it.
For me, Mondays are crazy, because I deal with weekend emergencies all day Monday, so I'd be like coming in on two wheels.
I think we've done a good job, too, of just being flexible as a committee, if we need to pivot one month, you know, we'll, we'll do that, too.
All right, and I think that's it, I have no chairman's report, other than again, two more wake-ups, and we're done. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Or a second?
Second.
We're adjourned at nine oh eight, unless anybody wants a discussion on that.
I vote yes to...